If you wouldn't mind taking your seats, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Is that mic on?
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. It is 4:00 on Wednesday, October 16th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And first and foremost, I would like to invite my good friend, Reverend James C. Vaughn, Jr., to please come to the podium and provide the invocation for us. Reverend, great to see you.
Let us pray. Shamaris radel adonai Eloheinu echad. Here O Israel, the Lord, our God is one. Our Father, we would not weary thee in always asking for something. This afternoon, however, we pray that you would take something from us. Take out of our hearts any bitterness that lies therein, in a resentment that curdles and corrodes our poise. Take away the stubborn pride that keeps us from apology and confessing our faults, making us unwilling to open our hearts to one another. For when our hearts are closed to our colleagues, they are open to thee. I beg you, Father, to cover these stellar and sophisticated public servants with your peace. console them with your prosperity. Certify them with your power and consecrate them with your prosperity as they serve, continue serving, the sentences of Tallahassee. And then, Father, when our time on this side of the grave falls exhausted at the feet of eternity and when each of us must stick our swords in the golden sands of time, please give our souls a resting place in your ubiquitous presence, where Job declared the wicked will cease from troubling and every weary heart will be at home forever. Shalom, Ashanti, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a packed house tonight, and we have two presentations. But before we get to the presentations, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've got one modification. Item 1101, which is the Report on Local Government Marijuana Reform Efforts offered by the city attorney, those materials were included after their original posting of the agenda to include information relevant to the discussion Leon County had yesterday.
Any questions of the city manager? All right. Excellent. I'd like to ask Mr. Rob McGarrett, Stephen Mayfield, James Barnes, and the rest of the city Tallahassee team to join me and Dave Schreiber, the Executive Vice President of American Public Gas Association, at the podium for a proclamation. Did I miss anybody, Rob? Folks, this is an exciting day for the city of Tallahassee. It's good to see the team here with us. One thing that we, come on, the more the mayorier. One thing that we take great pride in at the city of Tallahassee is delivering world-class services that are recognized on both the state and national level. We are proud of the service delivery that we have, and I have a very special proclamation. Rob, if you'll come join me, please. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the city of Tallahassee's mission is to be the national leader in the delivery of public service, including providing a full suite of utility services consisting of electric, gas, water, wastewater, solid waste, and stormwater, and whereas the city's natural gas utility earned the 2019 Public Gas System Achievement Award, which is the top recognition from the American Public Gas Association, highlighting the substantial contributions made by the city's natural gas utility to our community, other gas utilities, and the goals of the APGA, and whereas the city safely provides natural gas energy through 920 miles of underground gas mains and serves over 32,000 customers in the Leon, Gadsden, and Waculla areas, and whereas natural gas is a clean, cost-effective, and domestically-produced fuel, which helps further our community's commitment to clean energy, and whereas the city has made great strides towards reaching 100% net clean renewable energy through its use of natural gas, robust demand-side management programs, integration of solar energy, and adoption of new technologies such as high-efficiency reciprocating engine generators, among other initiatives, and whereas the city is also a proud public power provider whose electric utility has exceeded the CO2 reduction targets of both the 2020 Paris Accord and the Kyoto Protocol and is currently emitting fewer tons of CO2 annually than it did in the early 1990s while at the same time serving almost 50% more customer demand, and whereas it takes a skilled and dedicated workforce to achieve these accomplishments, ensure the integrity and dependability of our distribution systems, and to assist customers with energy conservation and cost savings, which is why during the first week of October each year, we celebrate Public Natural Gas, Public Power, and Customer Service Weeks. Now, therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee and the entire city commission, do hereby recognize the City of Tallahassee Utilities as a most valuable and vital community asset and celebrate earning the title of Best Gas Utility in the Nation. Signed and dated today. Congratulations, Rob. Rob, I will allow you or anybody from the team a second for a couple of comments.
Well, why don't we let Dave come up and chat?
Come on up, Dave. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm pleased to be here today. It's always nice to get outside of Washington, D.C., now more than ever. This award recognizes Tallahassee at the top level of APGA's membership. There are 1,000 public gas systems nationwide in 37 states, including 29 in Florida. This 2019 Public Gas System Achievement Award, which I'll read right here, is in recognition of substantial contributions to the local community, the natural gas industry, other utilities, and APGA goals, while providing safe and reliable services to local owners and customers. Tallahassee's been a longstanding member of APJ. We thank you for your support. Stephen Mayfield is on our board. He's led several of our committees. APJ is where we are right now because of the involvement in Tallahassee. And not only has Tallahassee received this award, but Tallahassee also received the Gold Level SOAR Award several years ago. And of our membership of 750 members, we've only given out six Gold Level SOAR Awards, and one of those to Tallahassee. So I want to thank you for everything you do and appreciate all your hard work.
Well, the mayor asked me to make a couple of comments. He said I have 30 minutes. I promise I won't be 30 minutes. Well, we do appreciate this recognition. It helps reinforce our commitment to Tallahassee and our customers, and I want to thank the mayor, the city commission, the city manager, Rob McGarrett, for their support. They've supported us in all that we've done. And I wanted also to thank Dave Schreiber from coming down and APJ for helping us, you know, make ourselves better. One of our goals is continual improvement, and we want to say that we will keep pursuing that goal, and we will keep becoming a better utility for Tallahassee and our customers. Thank you.
We just have the team come up this way. We're going to take one at a time. Come on, move on down, y'all. Move on down.
The A-team.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
For our second and final presentation of the afternoon, I didn't see, is Brandon Jett, did he walk in? Brandon. Oh, come on and join. Absolutely. Come join me. And by the way, any other members of the Builders Association that wants to come on down? Hey. Good, good, good. Folks, I don't know if you know this or not, but October is also Careers in Construction Month, and we have a proclamation that we'd like to present to the association. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas October of each year is designated as Careers in Construction Month, designated to help increase public awareness of the opportunities available in construction trade professions, and whereas during this month, area employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast career opportunities in construction, and whereas the construction industry is one of the nation's largest industries, employing more than 5 million individuals in the United States, with an anticipated need of 1.4 million new craft professionals by the year 2022, and whereas newly constructed homes and businesses create jobs and generate economic growth in the city of Tallahassee, and whereas Careers in Construction Month is designed to increase public awareness and appreciation of the construction craft professional and the entire construction workforce. Now, therefore, I, John Daly of the city of Tallahassee, hereby recognize October as Careers in Construction Month and further recognize the Tallahassee Builders Association for their role in supporting our local efforts to promote workforce development and working with future construction professionals to ensure Tallahassee's labor force continues to grow and fulfill our community's needs. Signed by me today, October 16th. Congratulations. Brandon?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say how important Careers in Construction is for our community and nationally also. The NAHB did a survey that 70% of contractors will use anywhere from 11 to 30 subcontractors for different, you know, construction careers. And also, I think it's very important now that teachers and counselors and parents and students understand that, I think it's important that they must recognize how important vocational education is today because there are careers in construction. Not everybody has to go to college. Also, one other quick thing is the, as far as plumbers, electricians, carpenters, and masonry people go, the average wage is over $50,000 a year. So you can make money doing it. Thank you.
Good job.
Put the ladies down front. Put the ladies down front, mayor.
All right, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Yes.
I want to introduce you to a few young ladies that are over here from Gaston County that are in the trades. I don't give them an opportunity to speak. Somebody would like to represent the group?
All right now.
Just your name and how about?
My name is Kerwin Jones Wilson. I'm a contractor in Gaston County. And I bought over some of our students from our Future Builders of America Club and our chapter from Gaston County. They're from Crossroad Academy, it's Kenzie Precious and Trinity. And we had some of our guys come on up.
Come on, gentlemen. Brothers, represent.
All right.
Got to represent, man.
And Seth T. and Jerry. And so these are some of our up-and-coming contractors, our plumbers or electricians. We're trying to promote more of our youth to get into the trades because most of my subcontractors are kind of getting up in age, and I need some of the younger guys to get up on my roofs and get up on the crawl spaces. So they're very important to us, and we hope that you continue to support construction and our youth in construction. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Glad she spoke.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin system input on agenda items, I do have one quick announcement. Dennis, our auditor today, is his birthday. Happy birthday, Dennis. I know there's no other place you'd rather be right now than spending your birthday with the city commission at a formal meeting, but we appreciate you being here. Moving on, Mr. Clark, do we have any system input on agenda items?
Mayor, at this time, I have three speakers, each of them on item 1301, which is your TPD headquarters location.
Okay.
The first speaker is Stanley Sims, and then Kim Williams.
Mr. Sims, you going to wait for the item? Excellent. Mr. Williams, would you like to wait for the item, or would you like to speak now? Yes, sir. Excellent.
And Dr. Hallifield on the same item, wait for the item or come now?
Dr. Hallifield, thanks for being with us for the regularly scheduled meeting. Your name and address, please. Three minutes.
Dr. Hallifield, Longleaf Court. How come this police thing would just never die? It just keeps coming back to the black community, and it's crazy. It is absolutely crazy. The black community is already over policed. You know, we got police all over the place. Dunn Street, where that 60-year-old grandmama was tased. Y'all remember that? Walking in the street in a community where there were no sidewalks. I still don't know if there's sidewalks. And think about this, Curtis. We got 100% of the cameras in the black community. We only have 100% of the crime. Again, we got 100% of the cameras. We don't have 100% of the crime. Curtis, I know you love these cameras, but as the black community gets more and more gentrified, you're going to have more and more police being called on people. Big Ben Kays is a good example. I had the police two times in a six-month period. Big Ben Kays either called the police on me or threatened to call the police. What about that, Curtis? I know, Curtis, you think I probably belong in jail anyhow. I don't doubt it. But policemen with guns, and it was just racism, pure racism. Can you even imagine Big Ben Kays calling the police on a white physician? It would never happen. It would never happen. And now you got the whole South Side being gentrified. You're going to have more and more police being called on black people. Think of Texas, Fort Worth, time after ti- you can get shot for being in your living room playing a video game with your nephew. Shot dead like that woman in Fort Worth. Think about that, Curtis. So I'm saying we need more cameras in the black community when you got cameras in Ox Bottom and the Rose Hill aristocracy or whatever. But the reason they want all of these police on the South Side because for some perverted reason, they think that black people are inherently more criminal.
Thank you, Dr. Hallifield. Appreciate you coming out today. Mr. Cook, do we have any other public speakers?
Mayor, I have received a couple of additional cards, one from Christine Henry and one from Gregory James. As we noted earlier, you're welcome to speak now or speak at the time of the item. I believe both indicated they'd like to speak now, though.
Ms. Henry, would you like to speak? I did not see you walk in, Christine. Yeah, would you like to speak now or wait till the agenda item itself? Thank you, sure. And then our next speaker, I'm sorry?
Mr. James?
Mr. James, good to see you. Great. So we have no other public speakers at this time?
Correct.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Excuse me. Do we have any appearances by appointed boards or committees or others, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
We're on the consent agenda. Has any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Mayor Pro Temp, do we have any public speakers on the consent agenda?
We do not.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Temp moves the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item 11.01, if I am correct. Madam Attorney, the Report on Local Government Marijuana Reform Efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also would like to, of course, acknowledge the presence of Jack Campbell, the state attorney for the Second Judicial Circuit. We also have with us Sheriff Walt McNeil, as well as Major Jason Larson, who are going to be available after I do a brief presentation to speak on some of these issues.
Excellent.
On September 11, 2019, the city commission directed that a report be presented to the city commission regarding reform approaches that have been taken by local Florida jurisdictions related to the possession of small quantities of marijuana and city of Tallahassee data in this regard. This request was initiated by Commissioner Jeremy Matlow in light of State Attorney Jack Campbell's July 30, 2019, letter to local law enforcement agencies providing that with some exceptions. The state attorney's office would no longer be charging people with possession of cannabis absent a confession to what the substance is or testing by a lab that can meet certain evidentiary standards. Per the Tallahassee Police Department, testing labs are now available and more are coming online. Because misdemeanor marijuana possession remains a criminal offense under both federal and state laws, any local ordinance in Florida intending to decriminalize marijuana would be null and void and would not preclude prosecution. For these reasons, the state attorney has indicated his opposition to any local marijuana decriminalization ordinance in the circuit over which he has jurisdiction, including the city of Tallahassee. However, the state attorney's office currently administers a diversion program throughout the Second Judicial Circuit designed to divert misdemeanor offenders from the criminal justice system. Under the program, an individual can avoid criminal prosecution, participate in community service, pay a program fee, or if unable to participate in a work camp, and have an opportunity for education and treatment. At this time, 20 law enforcement agencies have signed on to the agreement. The Tallahassee Police Department adopted the diversion program in TPD General Order Number Six. TPD, relating to some very specific information provided by the department, encountered 540 individuals between July 1, 2018, and June 30, 2019, who were solely in possession of a misdemeanor amount of marijuana or who had a warrant for only misdemeanor possession of marijuana. 23 people, or 4.2% of the total number encountered, were issued a diversion by the officer on the scene. 365, or almost 70%, were not sanctioned. The marijuana was impounded, and the individual was released with officer discretion. TPD is present to address any questions regarding its handling of offenses for small quantities of marijuana. Since 2015, at least 16 governments in Florida have adopted local marijuana reform ordinances in an effort to decriminalize misdemeanor marijuana possession. Generally, the term "decriminalization" describes a public policy that replaces criminal sanctions for minor marijuana-related offenses with the imposition of civil fines. Some local governments impose a civil fine of $100 for the first offense, which increases for subsequent offenses up to a maximum of two or three offenses. Some, but not all, of these ordinances also allow for the offender to perform community service in lieu of a fine. One local jurisdiction requires an offender to participate in drug screening as well as treatment and education and an education program if warranted. Conversely, some other local jurisdictions impose $100 fine for each offense with no limitation on the number of times an offender may receive a civil penalty. Because the city of Tallahassee has no authority to decriminalize marijuana, the city commission could consider a draft ordinance that provides an option for civil penalties instead of criminal charges. Marijuana possession remains illegal under both federal and state law. A local ordinance would not preclude an offender from being charged and prosecuted with a criminal offense. In order to effectuate a true decriminalization of misdemeanor marijuana possession, federal and state legislation would need to be adopted. On last evening, the Leon County Board of County Commissioners discussed a marijuana civil citation program and decided not to pursue the same. The matter failed on a tied vote. Both the state attorney, Jack Campbell, and Sheriff Walt McNeil are here to provide their view regarding these reform efforts and the efficacy of the Second Judicial Circuit diversion program and answer any questions you may have in this regard.
Gentlemen, thanks for being with us. I certainly do appreciate it. First, let's go to public comment. Mr. Clark, do we have anybody that'd like to speak on this issue?
We do not have any speakers on this issue.
Excellent. Sounds great. Let's open it up to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Matlow, this was, you originally brought this idea up?
Yeah, thank you. And first off, thank you to the city attorney's office for the extensive review of all the ordinances around Florida. I think it's very helpful to see what different municipalities and counties in our state are already doing. For clarification, I believe last night, the majority of the county commissioners supported moving forward with an ordinance, but one commissioner dialed in by phone, so his vote wasn't able to be accepted. So I think they may have the desire to bring it back to their next meeting since the majority of them did support adopting an ordinance. You know, it's my position that, you know, I understand the cloudiness of the law amongst this whole situation. We talked about state law and federal law. We know medical marijuana is in direct violation of federal law. So there's an understanding that this issue is evolving. So the point, the reason I brought forth this conversation to begin with, I think we're almost to a point where, and a lot of our agencies are already practicing, if you have 20 grams or less, we just don't do any arrests. And I think what we're getting, what I like for us to do is add another tool to the tool chest. I don't think we can, you know, direct any law enforcement agencies not to make arrests, and we certainly can't direct the state attorney not to prosecute, and that's totally up to their personal discretion, and I don't want to interfere in that. But when we have, we've had 177 people who had a notice to appear, and that's effectively an arrest, but they're not removed from the site at that specific time. So this would give an option. That's not a written form of arrest that involves a criminal proceeding, also isn't letting them go, but still be able to cite them, you know, with a fine. We have a criminal diversion program that I think works well, but I think it can be too punitive if maybe you were arrested for marijuana before. We became so relaxed about it, and that's on your record, and you get arrested again, and your arrest history prevents you, and you get stuck in this cycle. So we talk about, you know, restorative justice, and, you know, once you served your time and did your sentence or paid your dues, that you'd be treated fairly and the same as everybody else. So I think as people are, more and more people are using medical marijuana, you know, we can debate whether, you know, all of those are valid. I don't want to argue with their doctors, but I think generally, people agree that that's a workaround in the system. So I'm looking for, though it may not affect individual actions by any individual agency, I think it's our purview to represent our constituencies. 75% of our area voted for medical marijuana when it was on the ballot. There's two, three ballot initiatives coming in 2020. We'll see if they pass, but I think we have an opportunity to do what's in our purview, which is adopt an ordinance and similar that the county's supporting and provide for a civil penalty for $100.
Is that in the form of a motion, or is that just a comment?
I'm opening it up for discussion.
Okay. So we do not have a motion on the table. Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor, could we hear from the city attorney and sheriff?
So I would like, Mr. Campbell, if you don't mind approaching, thank you so much for being with us, and a couple of questions to start off with, and then I'm going to ask Major Larson and Sheriff, well, Sheriff McNeil and Major Larson to please comment as well. So out of all of the, what was it, 30 jurisdictions, I guess, that have signed on to the current law that still provides officer discretion, how many, is that your entire circuit?
Every agency other than the FHP signed the MOU. The MOU is still using the program despite, FHP is using the program even though they didn't sign the MOU. So I have continuity continuity, and will continue to have continuity. There should not be any disparity on how people are treated in Midway or Appalachia Cola compared to Monroe Street, and I'm going to make sure that we have fidelity throughout the circuit.
Unless Leon County or the City of Tallahassee takes the next step and takes, how does this work? I'm not an attorney. If you take away officer discretion...
You can't. Candidly, to do so would be a crime. Officer discretion, once again, under the supremacy clause, these officers, myself included, have to follow the federal law, just like this body could not. I mean, we've had countless issues where states tried to thumb their nose at the federal government throughout our history, and that has repeatedly failed. You cannot do that. You cannot try to stop an officer from following their oath. Every one of the programs would do so, would fail. You can't stop our office from having the discretion to criminally prosecute. The proposals are all discretionary from the office. They bring the exact same sanctions that are being suggested here, except that they allow, our program is being handled by my staff. We've now been adopted by the Florida Legislature, both the Eighth Judicial Circuit, which covers Gainesville, and the Second, which is this, are the pilot programs for a diversion program that's now been adopted. The legislature, we're looking at taking this statewide. So the program allows our, we're not, we're doing it with my own staff. If, while I understand the proposal is allegedly revenue neutral, I'm not going to prosecute any of this ordinance because it would be contrary to the Florida statutes, and so you'd have to set up your own prosecution, your own court system, your own punitive system, appellate courts. I think it would be extraordinary. I don't think that this body has the power to arrest under this issue. So if people did not follow with your civil, I guess you could raise their taxes or something, but you would be otherwise frustrated in your ability to take any consequence. So that's where we are. I think you've gotten good process. Candidly, when I took office in 17, I recognized that there was some inconsistency statewide, or circuit-wide. I recognized that different agencies, and so that's why I swallowed this entire thing up. This body agreed to set up a, and I appreciate, a fund, as did the Leon County Commission, which allows it to be completely free. If somebody can't afford it, I didn't want cash register justice, and so the amount of, you know, it shouldn't make a difference what the color of the uniform is, shouldn't make a difference on whether or not, which type of officer you do, whether or not you can afford it. And so I've been able to, and now by taking it over, I can sit there and make those interventions, despite the suggestions. It is a discretionary, prosecutorial discretion. I have assistant state attorneys who are evaluating each case where they can look at the entire criminal justice. One of my concerns was due process. If, with the system that you're talking about, you would ostensibly be making contact with citizens out on the street and then asking them to make a legal decision without benefit of counsel. Often, in our town, we have a lot of students, they would like to be able to talk to their parent about before they admit guilt and go into programs. Our program allows that. I've spoken with Annie Thomas, the public defender. He is available, and other defense attorneys, to give counsel before they sign up with our program. It's a very comprehensive program, and I've looked at what's going statewide. I've talked to all 20 state attorneys about this. This is the pilot program that we are working at statewide, and that's my answer of how it go forward. Candidly, I don't, I think that an ordinance can be passed, but I don't think that there would be any enforcement for it. And candidly, I'm working very hard with our law enforcement partners, including the two gentlemen sitting next to me, and all of the men and women who stand with them. We've got some real criminal justice challenges. If this body wants to work on them, I'm happy to sit down and talk to you about some places that y'all can help. I think mental health is going to be a major issue that we're going to be talking about, and trying to look at comprehensive mental health reform, trying to get some of these people out of the detention facility, and trying to get them out of the streets and so that we can give them. If y'all want to work on criminal justice, I'm happy to do it. But candidly, the U.S. Congress is who's going to decide whether federal law will be on marijuana, and the Florida Legislature will be the one who decides where the state is, and I think we're kind of need to stay in our lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the state attorney? Yeah, Commissioner Matlow?
So just for clarification, so the, around Florida, we have Alachua, Broward, Cocoa Beach, Miami-Dade, Orlando, Osceola, Palm Bay, West Palm. They're just all in violation of the law, the ordinances they put into place?
They don't have to follow the law. They've worked out systems with the state attorney there where the state attorney is backing up their play. Is basically, they have adopted, and to each one of those programs, they've adopted in conjunction with the state attorney. Instead of doing that, when I first took office, we set up a diversion program that's consistent. That's why, when you're doing it, some state attorneys, like for instance, Miami and the 11th, Ms. Rundle, that's a one circuit, one county, and so they have a system that's set up that way. I've tried to show fidelity because I represent six counties, so I can't have, and I'm not going to allow for the crimes to be different once you cross a county line. I'm going to be consistent to every person because I represent every person in the circuit, and so some of those statements are disparity. No, I wouldn't say they just don't have to, they don't have to follow it. I believe in those other, Alachua does not have that program. Their commission has talked about it, but I've talked to the state attorney about it specifically. He's not backing that system. He's using the same diversion program that we are. Some of these other places are allowing a fine, but once again, it has no teeth without the state attorney coming in and saying, which is where we were originally. If you, you could contract with me if I was willing to, to come and prosecute people who don't violate, who don't pay your fine civilly. But once again, I got a concern about that because I don't think that the person on the side of the road was given, afforded to due process, because once again, they were put into a Hobson's Choice of, candidly, I've got a lot of 18, 19-year-olds on the side of the street here, and when they were given the choice of, we can take you to jail, or you can sign this contract to pay $100 fine. Well, that's not real due process. That's not really giving them the full afford of counsel or their parents. So I'm not going to ever come back and put that person in jail because of what they did that night, because to do so, I think, is violating their constitutional rights. And so that's where I have some concerns as far as my legal ethics, and that's why we set up the program that we did.
Commissioner Matlow, follow up?
Thank you. And that makes sense, and we can look at how citation programs work in other counties, but generally, I know if you get a traffic citation, you still have the ability to contest it. You're not necessarily signing your rights.
You absolutely can, but there you're dealing with, they can suspend your driver's license. They're not going to go ahead and start going into a criminal prosecution situation. Once again, you have different types of tickets. A DUI is indeed, you have two different people when you get a DUI. You're dealing with administrative policies, and you go through that process, and they can suspend your driver's license. You're also, it's also criminalized under Florida statute, and so you have both the criminal justice system pursuing you and the other. That's why you'll sometimes hear it's a noncriminal offense. General speeding is a noncriminal offense. It works with a magistrate system, which is Florida, but once again, you all would have to, if you decide to do this, you're going to need to set up your own magistrate system, and then once again, if you, if they don't follow through with it, what are going to be your ramifications? You're, I don't think, under Florida law, you would have the authority to take their driver's license away, so that's why I made the comment. I think this body, whether you could raise their taxes or somehow use municipal, what you do have authority over to negatively impact them, I guess you could do that. But otherwise, I don't think you'd have any real teeth into the 20-year-old who you caught smoking marijuana at Dope Campbell Stadium.
And just one more question on the diversion program. So currently, if you're a previous offender, are you eligible to go through that program?
You are eligible. Once again, I have, I'm blessed to have 45 very smart, very hard-working assistant state attorneys, and I believe in customized care for each and every case. So every time one of those cases comes in, we have an assistant state attorney look at it. So if I have somebody who had, for instance, they got caught smoking pot in 1975, and now we catch them in 2019, that's a very different situation than if I have somebody who was caught three months ago. And so that's why I want the discretion. I don't make bright-line tests or situations for it. For instance, I also have situations in the diversion program, particularly in the rural counties, where there's just life's a little different. We had somebody who was criminally prosecuted for eating a turtle. I think that's inappropriate. So we, they also have a diversion program. Once again, my prosecutors can use appropriate sanctions when they need to. So no, there isn't a one shop. It depends on the situation. I ask, you know, once again, we have a large student population that I'm very concerned about, and I want to make sure. So if I've got an 18-year-old who twice in two months is getting caught with different substance abuse issues, I may want to send him to disc village and get a substance abuse evaluation, to nip that in the bud before they fail out of school, get a DUI, and end up with some terrible consequences. Once again, I trust my prosecutors to make the interventions by looking at the entire person instead of just making arbitrary decisions.
Gotcha. So, one more disclaimer. And that's what I'm trying to get at, is how do we be on a level playing field, especially for marijuana possession? And I understand your side, it's a valid, you know, no case. Personally, you know, my opinion is, if you're caught with marijuana, it shouldn't matter if you have a criminal history or not. I think it's a petty offense, and we should treat those the same, whether you have any type of criminal record or not, because at the end of the day, you're in possession of something that we deem a medicine in our state. We let people freely use it throughout the state, and largely, the power invested in our city and our state and our federal government comes from the people, and a supermajority of our people seem to support it. So I appreciate your time and coming and explaining your position. It's still my position that I don't think it really changes anything. If we do have an ordinance, maybe it creates headaches in how it's enforced, but it doesn't take away any officer discretion, whether they decide to let somebody go, give a notice to appear, or take them into custody, and then if a criminal activity starts, it would come to your office still.
I understand, and I recognize your point. Just for clarification, in 2017, Michael Randolph was killed during a marijuana ripoff. In 2018, Tyrone Tillman was killed on a marijuana ripoff. In 2019, Anthony Bell was killed in a marijuana ripoff. So I can, I can show you the autopsy photos of people who are dying because of marijuana in the City of Tallahassee. So when the officers are dealing with these situations, often, what some people feel is a minor issue escalates to extraordinary violence and even death. And so as long as it's a crime, I think that we're going to need to be able to have the full gamut of approaches to be able to respond to that crime. And each one of us, and myself included, raised our hand to follow the U.S. Constitution, the laws of the United States of America and the state of Florida, and none of us can really be asked to violate that in any way. So thank you very much, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, questions for?
Just a couple of quick questions, Mr. State Attorney. It is my understanding that the constitutional amendment that was passed was very specific to medical marijuana prescribed by a licensed physician for a medical condition. Am I correct?
Absolutely, and that's, once again, if the Florida Legislature passes it, or if the Constitution passes it, I'm going to follow every one of those laws because I've taken a note to do so. But that's, once again, with the proper body, with the proper jurisdiction making those. But you're right, the medical marijuana, both the packaging, I've candidly had the opportunity where some of the providers have come to us and said, we'd like to sit down and show the packaging, the form, the quantity, the THC levels. There are a lot of different, and we have been working in law enforcement for decades on various types of narcotics that are available through, there are various databases for Oxycontin, any Tylenol-3, whatever is controlled substances. So this is not a new area. They've just added marijuana to, once again, to a pharmaceutical list, and we're responding account similarly. So it's, it hasn't really changed our dynamic, but once again, we do need to be able to enforce the laws as the legislature tells us to do and as the Congress tells us to do.
Right. And it is my understanding that even though there are proposals to go to the ballot in 2020, which have not, at this point, been certified by the State Supreme Court for the ballot, that the recreational use of any amount of marijuana, use or sale of any amount of marijuana in the state of Florida is still illegal.
It is still illegal under Florida law, as my letter said, and as has already been mentioned by your counsel. We're getting the testing things online. They are online at this point. I'm still enforcing the law, and we're going to continue to follow the law, and we're moving there. So yes, sir, it's still very much against the law. Once again, I recognize the severity. I'm trying to find a balance with our diversion program. I think we're striking that balance. As far as consistency, I'm ultimately responsible for the consistency for all six counties, and I will be happy to get down into the numbers of what we're doing and why we're doing it on each individual case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. State Attorney.
Commissioner, before we jump in, yes, the city manager wants to say a couple of words. Thank you, Jack. Or Commissioner, do you have a question for the state attorney?
I do.
Okay. City manager, Commissioner, go ahead.
Real quick, I can make this quick, because I think it's germane to this discussion. I know we want to hear from our sheriff and maybe questions, but Major Larson's here from TPD, and I think it would be very enlightening to hear the experience of what happened in a year's period of time. The city attorney talked about 540 interactions with individuals with small amounts of marijuana. Actually, what happened in those incidents, I think it would be enlightening, especially how it connects to the diversion program. I can tell you, I'll steal the numbers a little bit, 365 of those resulted in no interaction other than impounding the marijuana.
Right.
Another 100-plus resulted in a notice to appear, which connects with the state attorney's diversion program. I share that because I think that's helpful in terms of knowing that the vast majority of interaction in our community, as it relates to TPD in particular, probably is resulting, I think, in the discussion that you're taking this. So I want, I want to make sure I put a pin in that. We don't forget that because I think it's good to know.
Commissioner Williams Cox?
I wanted to, what I wanted to say is, and my concern is, I want to make sure, like you're saying, that it's consistent. I don't want anyone to drive out of City of Tallahassee and go over to Quincy or Midway and get arrested because it was okay in Tallahassee, but it's not okay over there. And it is fair, because being the mother of three black sons, I've heard the stories of, you know, your child goes to Rickards, they get stopped, they go to Apple Yard. Your child goes to Charles, they get stopped, they go home. I don't want to hear that in our community. I want to know that it's fair, it's, you know, we're taking into consideration these individuals' futures, and that we're not wrecking individuals. So to that point, I like hearing that they're, in this jurisdiction, in your jurisdiction, it's consistent. I am concerned about knowing the difference between marijuana and hemp.
Yes.
Hemp being the new crop. It's like the new whatever other south.
Right.
And that's, apparently, that's more palatable than marijuana, although hemp can become marijuana, as I understand.
It's the same plant.
Same plant, harvested different times and what have you. So how do we know? Because there's no test yet, but I know you say testing is coming online.
There is scientifically a test. What it is, the active ingredient, something called THC, which is a name I can't pronounce all the way out, THC. And point three, basically, the legislature statutorily and the U.S. Congress has said that cannabis with 0.3% or less THC is now called hemp. So it is, whether it's cannabis or cannabis or cannabis, it used to be the whole genus, which is a group of species. How do we tell the difference between it? We send it to a lab. And so that's what we're doing, and that's why I sent the, when we couldn't tell the difference between, we stopped arresting people because we didn't want, and that's exactly, once again, your law enforcement community responded to exactly the concern that you have, Commissioner, which is that we did not want to be inappropriately arresting people for having innocent projects. Now, we're getting the technology to be able to differentiate those things, and when we find that it's over 0.3%, and some of this is now getting extremely high THC, when we can get it back from these labs, then we'll make a decision whether to prosecute, and there's some finances that go into that, and then we can make our discretion. But as I couldn't agree more, I want to see consistency throughout the circuit, and I'm very proud of that. Almost 20% of the cases that our office handled in 2018 went through the diversion program, and it's the same prosecutors that will be handing that in Franklin County, or handling that in Gadsden County and Leon County, and that way you do have, not dependent on the officer. Once again, I'm not in any way going to try to frustrate my partners in law enforcement. What happens on the side of the road is between the officer and, to quote the city manager, if they decide, which has happened for time immemorial, if they decide that they're going to throw it away, impound it, and let them go, that's certainly the offer, then they have nothing. But if they send it to me, then my discretion comes in. Okay, I'm looking at this person. Do I think that they need to go see a counselor? Do I think that they can go through a diversion program and have no criminal results? I can make those types of decisions while looking at the whole person, and conversely, they can make a decision on whether or not they want to go into that program with the benefit of talking to their family or to an attorney, and to have, just be sober when they make those types of decisions, instead of making it on the side of the road like you're describing.
I'd be really interested in hearing what, how TPD uses their discretion, because I think that's, that has been the concern about the undecided road discretion, and that's based on the officer's experience, what the person presents, I'm sure. So, you know, that, being a mother, that doesn't make me feel good, because we know that everybody has a bad day, and I wouldn't want my son to meet up with someone who's having a bad day. And so I like to hear how TPD, how you make those undecided road decisions.
And once again, I defer to Major Larson as to how TPD, Sheriff McNeil, and House Sheriff's Office handles each of their discretionary things. If there's anything else... If there's anything else, I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to sit right back down.
Commissioner Williams Cox still has the floor, and I'm going to ask either the sheriff or Major Larson to respond to her question about officer discretion, please. And really, in a nutshell, is there a different position from Leon County Sheriff's Office or Tallahassee Police Department on this issue? Or are you all in agreement with the state attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank commissioners.
Thanks for joining us, by the way.
Happy to, and thank you for the conversation around a very important issue in our community. The question of discretion goes back to the heart of what our state attorney talked about, diversion program that we all agreed to. We all signed that agreement, basically with an understanding that we're going to be unified in a way we try to go after these issues in our community. What that means, Commissioner, is that we too realize that oftentimes marijuana and those small, if you want to say, Commissioner Matlow, those small drugs lead to bigger drugs, and oftentimes lead to major crimes occurring in our community. And what we're trying to do is to make sure that we are focused on being as, equally applying our discretion across the spectrum with respect to trying to make sure we get those persons' help. And I think what our state attorney said about mental health and about drug substance abuse treatment, those are the areas we're trying to focus now in terms of, some of what we're doing is we make those contacts with those individuals who are using drugs, and our effort is to try to figure out how long have they been involved, and what kind of help assistance can we give them. That diversion program allows us to do that, to make those assessments. And it's not foolproof, but obviously, we put a premium on trying to deal with these problems from a mental health perspective and from a law enforcement perspective, understand the intersection with respect to both of those issues. And the discretion that our deputies and our officers have, basically, is with the understanding of our overall mission, which is to identify who the persons are and what the needs are. If there are persons who we call chronic offenders, then those persons we're going to go after because they are chronically involved in crime in our community. And we're identifying who those persons are with our deputies, with our officers, and we're going to get them off the streets because they're the ones that are involved in crime. The other group of people who we know by our interactions with them have addiction problems or have family issues, and we're trying to get those persons into the diversion program that the state attorney has set up. Quite honestly, this issue, from my perspective, comes a little perhaps premature. I would like to see us give the diversion initiative that we started with the collective back in 17, as Attorney Campbell just spoke of, give us a chance to see exactly what kind of outcomes we'll have in our community. And I think, I think at the end of the day, you'll be proud to see what we're doing. And it does, and we do, Commissioner, we understand the issue. I'm an African-American male myself, and I understand that oftentimes African-American males are at the tip of the spear with respect to enforcement. We don't let that become the focus of our deputies, our officers. We try to do constitutional policing in Leon County and the city of Tallahassee.
Thank you, Sheriff. Major Larson, would you like to jump in as well? And then Commissioner Matlow will come back to your question.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for joining us.
In reference to the statistics that are listed, you'll see the 540 arrests that we did not charge. We made contact with individuals who had possession less than 20 grams of marijuana. And in those contacts, we did not charge 365 times of the 540. So we are at a level between the not charged and pre-arrest diversion for just possession less than 20. We add those together, we end up at 71%, 72% of people that we run into are not charged or offered pre-arrest diversion. TPD's position mirrors the sheriff and the state attorney's office position. We believe that the program does work. We utilize it. And in fact, we've taken this conversation and this, you know, issue that's kind of politically popular right now, and took a seat and looked at our own policies and our own procedures. And I had some of the same questions that you had, Commissioner Cox. We looked at them. We understand that there may be some cleaning up of policy that we can do. We actually rewrote our general orders for alternatives to arrest, to ensure that the state attorney's diversion program was the preferred option when the criteria was met for that, no matter what the charges. So we've changed that to make sure that that happened. And some of the questions that also came up were the ones that were taken into custody that were under 20 grams. And there were 40 people that were taken into custody. So I had some of the same questions you did. What were those charges for? And I looked at it. And so if we look at those specific case, not just the possession of marijuana, but there's a fact pattern that's contemporaneous to that possession, could be what's going on around that, the totality of the circumstances. So I pulled a few of the case numbers, looked at them. We've had several instances where we had one subject that was in a vehicle, the two front-seat passengers were arrested for felony narcotics. There were two-way radios, a mask, a BB gun in the car, and the backseat passenger only had 20 grams of marijuana. But at some point, the officer's discretion led him to believe this person probably needs to go to jail tonight, whether it's the positive identification or to ensure that no other criminal activity occurs. That is what the officers do. And from what I've seen, they do a very good job of that. People that are on pre-trial, probation, have other issues. We had another one where he was in the backseat of a vehicle, made contact. Again, the car was carjacked an hour earlier. Whether he knew or not it was carjacked, whether we could prove that on scene or not, we couldn't prove that that person was involved, but they had possession less than 20 grams. They went to jail for that. Those are cases where personally, I agree that the officer had a good use of discretion. They were probably involved in other activities. And the utilization of those, I don't ever want to take discretion away from some of the officers. And our statistics kind of reveal that, though. In those other cases, obviously discretion was used 70% of the time that allowed us to let people go or provide that state attorney's office diversion program. And then with those cases, if we add all those up, and we see that State Attorney Campbell's program takes 61% of those cases and resolves them through his post-arrest diversion, we're really at maybe 50 people of all the contacts that we've had that are arrested in total that end up in some judicial process. And so in general, when I've looked back at some of these cases, I think overall, the police department does a good job. I have no problem with, like I said, the policy changes to ensure that we're utilizing it correctly. The review of that, again, and the supervisor review, if we decide with discretion to not go with somebody that may have that fact pattern that says, hey, this person's not been arrested, they do live within the judicial circuit, but to allow that arrest to be made. But again, they call their supervisor to ensure it's not just a singular person making that decision. And so we've got some safeguards. We see and we kind of hear where everything's going. But the police department's, you know, goal is to obviously police the community as it is and where it's going, and try to see and have some forethought in that. So we do see that, and as far as the crime analysis unit that come up with a lot of these stats, will develop some metrics in order to monitor these cases in the future.
Thank you, Major Larson. Appreciate it. Comfortable with the answer, Commissioner Williams Cox?
Thank you.
We'll come back to, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bryant?
Yeah, on point, on this point. Let me ask, of the 107 notices to appear that went to a diversion, do we know the success of the diversion program? And are any of those same people back in the system through any type of recidivism?
Yep. Yes, okay. So we're running at 89% success first time through. So the people that we put into diversion, 89% of them get success. Of the 2018, we then have started doing recidivism numbers on it, and we're better than 90% on no recidivism. So less than 10% recidivism. So the ones that we're screening out of that, once again, so you have the whole constellation of people with marijuana, once again, the officer's giving them discretion and nothing happening to them, that gets filed down. The ones that they actually send to our office, that gets further compressed to the ones that we send to the diversion program, and over 90% of them, we don't see them get rearrested. So our interventions are being successful. It's one of the reasons why legislature's using us as a pilot. We are appropriately culling the folks, and candidly, that's where, when those ones who have failed out or those who are getting rearrested, I think that it's appropriate. In anything, when you look at, one of the best predictors of future behavior is past behavior. So the fact that they failed out of my diversion before, perhaps I need a greater level of intervention, just like if one antibiotics didn't work for me with an infection, perhaps I need to go ahead and do a little bit more. I want to inform my practitioners with the entire picture instead of hiding the truth from my lawyer. Thank you. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. We still do not have a motion on the table. Commissioner Matlow, then the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Major. I think that's very informative, and, you know, obviously, I think we all appreciate the work that you do and understand the need for some flexibility in that discretion. And I appreciate everybody having this conversation, because I think it's enlightening in a lot of ways. One question, and help me wrap my head around it, if you would, of the notice to appear, you know, written arrest, written citation, however you want to say it, I'm trying to wrap my head around how many of those people, if they don't need to be removed from the scene, I just don't know. Where does the discretion get, like, what's the thought process between just letting somebody go and arresting them or writing?
In general, the diversionary program, from the police department's standpoint, is prior arrests. If you have a prior arrest or a history of arrest, even if you're on, say, pre-trial or whatever it is, we can still offer you a notice to appear. If you were caught with less than 20 and we offered you a notice to appear, you would get a court date. That violation may, if you were on probation, cause your probation officer to violate. Or we can do that on scene. It really depends, if we did it on scene, we'd take you to jail. Those are some of the other cases that we run into where we make physical arrests. But it really has to do with the history of the offender.
Okay. Mr. Mayor pro tem.
And sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Major.
And also, if that crime pattern or where they are would continue or not continue. So you'll see trespassing arrests and things like that not get noticed to appeared because the person will not leave if we walked away. And so because of that, just maybe that simple crime, because they're going to continue that crime when we leave, we can't offer those notices to appear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor pro tem.
I kind of wanted to get back, I do want to get back to the question that Commissioner Williams Cox asked earlier about the pattern of arrests with respect to certain demographics, be it race, gender, age. Because you do hear across the country that in some jurisdictions, African-American males are arrested in greater numbers than others, where the same amount of illegal drugs might be involved. And so Major Larson, and I appreciate the sheriff addressing that as well. So my question is, Major Larson, do the data that you all have collected through the Tallahassee Police Department and Mr. State Attorney, you can answer this from, in terms of your circuit, do, does your data bear that out in any way? That there are disproportionate arrests based on any demographic, be it race, sex, ethnic background, because there is a significant Hispanic population, I know in Gaston County, or gender? Do, does your data bear any of that out in the city of Tallahassee?
As far as the data for arrests, notice to appear, pre-arrest diversion, those we did not bear out in this chart. I can find all that out for you, there is no doubt. We do see with the 365 that were not sanctioned, we went through each and individual report and found that 73% who were not sanctioned were African-American. We had 1% Hispanic, 18% white, and 8% were unknown racer. We know that that is what we have as far as that, and it seems to be on par. And we also understand that our interaction with people may be coupled with other types of activity, and where we end up running into, you know, a certain population.
Okay. Mr. State Attorney?
candidly, I'm working on, I've taken everything paperless. I don't have the, I haven't started sorting them by race, age group, sex. It's just, I've just gotten to the point, my first thing I ask my folks in the program to do is give me my recidivism rate, and that's, I'm trying to get more reports. I simply don't have, what do you call it, a data analysis.
Yes.
I wish I did have one. They'll loan me theirs. I'm actually working here to try to start sharing data, so maybe he can analyze it better for me. That's one of the things where this body wants to help us. I think we love the investment in our data analysis, so that we can answer those questions, not just to y'all, but to the community as a whole.
Exactly. And I think that's going to be important, because I think what you all are doing is great. The fact that so many law enforcement agencies have signed on to it, the commitment that you all have made, that you stated here today, that you're demonstrating in your actions I have confidence in. But in order for the community to have confidence, they're going to have to know that it is being implied consistently. And regardless of where you live, your race, your ethnic background, your gender, your age, those factors will not matter so much as, you know, the particular circumstance surrounding the interaction that you have with a law enforcement professional. And so that would be my concern there, that we make sure that the community shares that same confidence.
All right, commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and weigh in, because I haven't had a chance to weigh in yet. First of all, I want to thank the state attorney, the sheriff, and Major for coming and participating today, and we certainly do appreciate all of the information that you have given. Sheriff McNeil, Mr. Campbell, I actually worked with you as a county commissioner to help draft that language and create the local ordinance on the county level that I think not only has been a true success, as you all three have pointed out, and the city then followed suit as well. And I know you worked real hard on that original language as well, but it is a model within the state of Florida that other communities have adopted. And let me be very clear, and you all are all very good friends, and I have no problem saying I've said it on the record before, that I am in favor of recreational marijuana, and I do think that society will get to the point to where it will pass on a state constitutional amendment at some point. I think that the state of Florida will be there. But until it passes on the constitutional amendment, I strongly believe that the laws that we have on the books today are appropriate for our community based on all of the different points that your three different agencies have talked about. Jack, excuse me, Mr. Campbell, for consistency across your district, it is important. For officer discretion, from both the sheriff's department and police department and all of our law enforcement agencies, is important. I think, as the sheriff and major, you have pointed out, we have been successful with officer discretion, and I fully support it. So I am looking for a motion tonight to accept the report with no further action.
I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor pro tem has made the motion, I'll come back to you in just a second, Commissioner Matlow. The mayor pro tem has made the motion to accept the status report with no further action, seconded by the mayor. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. That was the motion I was going to make. I think what's become abundantly clear here is that in relation to mental health and drug abuse, we're putting too much of the weight on the shoulders of the criminal justice system.
I agree.
Law enforcement officers. So in one respect, we're failing our community as a board up here. So I'd hope we'd look to staff and work with how we can get more involved and address really the underlying issues that they're dealing with, really on behalf of our whole community.
Yeah. I got the mayor pro tem, and I got Commissioner Williams Cox.
I checked with my data analysis group.
Or Commissioner Williams Cox and Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Campbell, I gave birth to him. They're closer to the street than I am, so I had a great conversation with them about what's going on out there and what should happen. And they agree with you. So that's my data analysis.
There we go. Mr. Mayor pro tem.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think until, unless and until the citizens of the state of Florida vote to make marijuana legal in our state, we shouldn't do anything to encourage our young people to either be involved in the use or sale of even less than 20 grams of marijuana. Now, I'm going to tell you, I went to college during the mid-1970s.
Uh-oh.
And that was a time, I'm not going to be a Bill Clinton now. I did inhale. I inhaled, y'all. I experimented with it. But I found out it wasn't, but that was during a time. I'm being forthright, I'm being honest. That was during, that was during a time when a lot of young-
Come on, don't let you get the high road on this issue, okay?
No punning. No pun intended, right?
[laughing].
But that was during a time when a lot of people were experimenting, uh, with marijuana, and I, I, I will have to tell you, I was one of those. I experimented, uh, but that was it. Uh, and did certainly determine that it wasn't something that I wanted to be, uh, involved with. Uh, and so I, I think it's important that we send a clear message, especially being a community where we've got so many young people, that it's not something that we encourage as a community. Uh, because there are effects of marijuana. It clouds your judgment, uh, your behavior in some instances changes. So there are effects of marijuana. It's just not a recreational drug that you use and there's no, no impact. Uh, and so I don't, I don't want anybody to think we're, we're the kind of community that would encourage that, uh, and especially with it still being legally, uh, against the law in both the sta-, at the, both the state and federal levels. And so we'll, we'll wait to see if those measures make it to the ballot next year, uh, and if the citizens, the voters of the state of Florida, those who choose to go to the polls and vote, have the appetite, uh, to legalize, uh, recreational use of marijuana, uh, in our state. But again, unless and until that time, I say we stay the course with what we've got and support the diversionary program, uh, that our local law enforcement agencies and the state attorney, uh, have developed and are, are modeling for the entire state of Florida.
I also agree that we put too much emphasis, um, on the law enforcement and not necessarily on mental health resources that we have. And I am very thankful that the commission, actually, we decided, um, when I mentioned it the other day at the meeting, we have actually scheduled a tour to go visit the Appalachian Center-
Yes.
-and to help educate ourselves as a body on the mental health issues. Consider this an official invitation, if you are available, to come join us as well and talk about these issues from your perspective, um, while we take that tour. I've got a motion on table to accept the status report, no further action by the mayor pro tem, seconded by the mayor. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioners, it is my, uh, goal to get as far as we possibly can through the city commission items under, um, section 11, uh, but I do wanna take a hard stop around 5:30, 5:40, uh, for dinner to come back at the public hearing at 6:00. So we are now on 11.02, Board of Trustees, Chapters 175, 185. Mr., um, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, uh, this item involves the appointment. Sorry, Jim, does-
I'll be glad to take it, that's-
Please, I'll defer to the treasurer clerk.
I'm sorry. Mr. Cook.
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, there are supplemental share plans for our police and firefighters under state statutes, uh, chapters 175 and 185, and part of the statutory provision for those is that there be a board of trustees for each of those. Um, some of those members are members of the police and, and fire, um, departments respectively, but there are also provisions for two members, um, to be appointed, uh, by the city commission. You had recently reappointed me in the, as the position of city treasurer clerk to fill one of those. This recommends Eddie Hatch, um, a citizen from our community who, um, uh, works in the field that would, um, suit him well for this position, and he's recommended for your approval.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Is anybody here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor pro tem and Commissioner Bryant. No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Number 11.03, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the appointment of two individuals to the municipal code enforcement board. The recommendation is to appoint Gloria Lee with a term expiring May 31st, 2022, and appoint, uh, Ms. Gwen Buristec with a term expiring May 31st, 2020.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk.
No, sir.
Is there anybody here from the general public that'd like to speak on this item?
Second.
Seeing none, it's been-
Blue staff recommendation.
Been properly moved, staff recommendation by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 11.04, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Ms., uh, Michelle Gomez to the podium as I read the introduction of this. Uh, as you know, the city supports, um, the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, uh, and each year we get an annual report. You have a, a document in front of you, uh, that outlines what has happened over the last year or so, uh, and Ms. Gomez is here to provide a presentation. At the conclusion of her presentation, uh, we recommend that you accept, uh, the report as well as, uh, authorize this staffing agreement that we enter into each year, uh, with the agency.
Ms. Gomez, thank you for sticking around. It's great to see you. You have the podium, you have the floor.
It's a pleasure to see you all. Thank you so much. Um, I am Michelle Gomez, Executive Director of the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. We have the honor of providing administrative support on your behalf to the commission, Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. And in that role, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the 2018-19 Chair of the Commission, uh, presiding over the report in front of you tonight, um, Gina Giacomo to present, uh, the presentation on the annual report.
There we go.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present the Tallahassee Leon Commission with the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. There are 21 women who serve on the commission and serve as a volunteer basis. There are a few commissioners here to be recognized and stand up, and a couple of them had to leave early. Uh, the first slide we would bring to your attention, um, that this year, the commission established a logo. The commission's purpose is to promote awareness on issues pertaining to women and girls and serve in an advisory role, providing input to the city and county. On page five of your annual report, you will find a list of advancements impacting the status of women and girls in our community since inception of the CSWG. The commission has three topic-focused committees and an organization and bylaw committee. The three topic committees are education and economic security, health and development, and violence and safety. A very important note to make is that all of our committee work has been done with collaborating with over 50 partners, including local and state government, private for-profit businesses, nonprofit organization, human service organizations, media, educational institutions, and, um, community advocates. Sure if I'm doing, got it. So the first, uh, committee, the organization and bylaw committee, we made great strides this year. We undertook a task of drafting a three-year strategic plan with input from commissioners' liaisons from both the city and county commission. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. The strategic plan is aligned with the city and county goals and will be reviewed on a bi-annual basis or continue to connect with strategic plans and goals as they change. The new strategic fame, framework represents a significant evolution of the commission's work, improvements to efficiency, responsiveness, cohesion, strengthening the foundation of the CSW. A key element in the strategic plan is this year, this year, starting that it, each year forevermore, the commission leadership will identify one community issue to focus on, and the three topic committee issues will take their focus on that issue. And they will all be guided by the strategic plan's four goals, as noted on the PowerPoint, and the initiatives that follow, which are also included in the annual report. Periodic reports will be provided to both the city and county on the progress of our strategic plan. Our education and economic security committee focused on poverty and how it relates to women in Tallahassee Leon County. Nearly 80% of the women households, heads of, women heads of households with children live daily in significant danger of being unable to meet their financial needs. To address the issue, the committee planned a women's economic summit, and the summit is upcoming. The foundation of the summit was the creation of the, the summit steering committee, which was established with a range right, range, large range of leadership. The goals of the summit are creating an opportunity for elected officials to be engaged in policy decisions facilitated by national experts, and for 95% of the summit attendees to receive information that they can take back and use to increase economic opportunity in our community for women. We're looking forward to hopefully all of you attending on October 30th, and that invitation is on the back of the annual report. The health and development committee focused on public health crisis for which women bear a significant burden, sexually transmitted infections. Leon County is number one in Florida and among the top 10 in the nation for rates of sexually transmitted infections. The committee participated in the Stop Out Syphilis Coalition launch with 70 other community members and will continue to partner to increase awareness in our community. The committee also presented the space. Excuse me, lost my train of thought, apologize. The committee also rep, was represented in a expert panel at WFSU Perspectives to also bring awareness and discuss solutions. The violence and safety committee focused on addressing the loss of women and girls lives by violence and sexual assault. The committee, attention was focused on restructuring the public's perception of violence against women, not as an isolated tragic incident, but as one of many actions that continue a violence, the lesser of which often is dismissed or downplayed. The committee produced a list of tips for recognizing behaviors on the microaggression end of the continuum, which is on the slide and included in the annual report. The committee convened several workshops with organizations that provide direct services to women and girls in our community to deliver and support and draw awareness with the microaggressions to the frontline individuals that are providing services to women and girls in our community. In addition, the committee members provided a workshop at the UPHS conference discussing the perception of violence against women and coordinating resources to women and children focused on, uh, reducing, uh, microaggressions. We just wrote at our last full commission meeting, we finalized our four-page communication plan, which we will also be providing to each of you, uh, that works on us communicating to, uh, as, as a body, the media, and most importantly, to both the city and county commission on a regular basis. It has been our honor for the CSW to serve the residents of Tallahassee and Leon County, and I bring to your attention the recommendations we've provided to you to consider on page four of the report, so together we can continue to make a difference in the lives of women and girls in our community.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Matlow.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you for, um, the report and all the hard work that, that commission does. It's, um, I think it's important for us to be intentional of, of, of how the things we do affect different demographics, and, um, your advocacy for women and girls, I think is outstanding. Um, thank you for all the recommendations and, uh, looking forward to going over them and see where we can work together to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem.
Thank you. Uh, seeing, uh, Reverend Mandrell in the audience, I'm gonna say that I am proud to be an honorary sister girl. [laughing] That's, that's, that's a joke that they've, uh, they, they made me honorary. But, but i- in that respect, I am proud to be the commission's liaison to the commission on the status of women and girls, and, uh, we had, uh, Commissioner Dozier is the liaison from the county, and we had a very good meeting, uh, with the leadership, uh, of the commission, I guess several weeks ago now, uh, and talked about the need to strengthen the relationship between our bodies and, uh, to, to have their strategic plan reflect the goals and mission of, of the commission, and you all have done that. Uh, I attended their board retreat on this past Sunday, y'all. Yeah. That's dedication. Uh, and, and talked about, uh, essentially the fact that, of, like you mentioned, uh, Commissioner Matlow, that we value the work of the commission. We want to have a closer working relationship, uh, and to strengthen that relationship and to have more communication, that you have a direct, uh, contact with the commission. Not, that's not to say that any of them couldn't come to a commissioner or you mayor directly, uh, but they know that they have, uh, a liaison on the commission, uh, that can attend meetings and workshops and events, uh, and share, uh, the direction that the city commission is going in and how we can all work together to impact, uh, and improve the quality of life of women, girls, and of course, families, uh, in our community. So thank you all for all the work that you do, and we look forward to, uh, continuing to build that relationship. Uh, and I, and I was especially, uh, happy to, Commissioner Matlow, to hear that, again, we, we have an organization that is focused, one, in its strategic plan, on the whole issue of poverty, and we appreciate you, uh, being an advocate for that and, and, uh, continuing to bring that to our attention. Uh, but we, and maybe when we do the committee, uh, we can have a representative from, uh, the commission, uh, as a part of that as well. So thank you for that. Thank you all so much again for all the work that you do, and we look forward to that, uh, continued partnership as we move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Bryant.
Yes, let, let me congratulate, uh, this group on the comprehensiveness of this program. If you read through it, you'll see that they have a strategic plan that has initiatives, goals, who's responsible, and what the status is. I, I just have to point that out and say commendations to you.
Mr. Mayor?
I was researching something, I'm sorry.
You got, you got enthralled in this, didn't you?
I'm sorry. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I, I, I too wanna congratulate you not only on the work that you're doing and the difference that you're making in our community, and how you keep women and girls in the forefront. I join you in that effort, and every opportunity that I get to make sure that, uh, they don't forget women and girls, I do that. This report, again, as I concur with, uh, Commissioner Bryant, this is a very, uh, comprehensive, easy to read, and it's not 100 pages. You just, so I say this, I, I say there's no, no, no disrespect. If you want the job done right.
Uh-oh. I know where you're going. I know where you're going.
You fill in the blank, you know what I'm talking about. Thank you. Girls rule.
I too wanna congratulate the commission on a fine job. Uh, I was on the county commission in 2011 when we created the first advisory committee and then moved into the formal commission role. I have supported you 100% every year from there, and this year will be no different. The mayor pro tem moves the staff recommended action, seconded by the mayor. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero.
So I don't know why you all didn't let a woman get in on that.
Uh-oh.
You guys, you guys just took it. You just took it.
You got an honorary sister girl.
All right, all right.
There you go. Uh, do we have any other items under policy formation and direction, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, no more items.
Excuse me, under, um, uh, city commission action.
No, sir, that, that concludes that section.
Excellent. Madam Attorney, do we have any introductions of ordinances under section 12? Okay. Colleagues, we are gonna go ahead and break now. We will be back at 6 o'clock, by law, for the public hearing. It is time for the city commission public hearing. Moving forward with item number 15.01, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15.01, uh, is an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Tallahassee Land Development Code, adding funeral homes to the list of permitted principal uses in the light industrial M1 zoning district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an accept, uh, an effective date. It is ordinance number 19-0-22. This is the first of two public hearings. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 13th, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Great. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment?
We have no speakers on this item.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on item number 15.01? Seeing none, commissioners?
Move approval.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 4-0 with Mayor Pro Tem out of chambers. Item number 15.02, please.
Item number 15.02 is a public hearing on ordinance number 19-Z-18. The public hearing will be held tonight due to public notice of the hearing, but will be continued to November 13, 2019, to allow a planning-commission appeal period as a result of an applicant request. It is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an NPUD plan unit development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
Have no speakers on 1502.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on 15.02? Seeing none, commissioners? Any comment? Mayor Pro Tem properly moves staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment?
You're just having the public hearing, you're not actually taking action on this one.
No action on this one. Excellent. 15.03, please.
Item number 15.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-Z-27, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end light industrial M1 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on 15.03?
We do not, Mayor.
Excellent. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on item 15.03? Madam Attorney, I'm assuming that we need a motion on this one.
Yes.
Any comment from the city commission?
Move to accept.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 15.04?
Item number 15.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-Z-30, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, amending the Maryland Oaks Crossing Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here that has not had a chance to fill out a card that would like to speak on 15.04? Seeing none, commissioners?
Staff recommendation?
Mr. Weiss, thank you for joining us, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, and will you please fill out a speaker card when you're done, turn it to the clerk.
Yes, sir, I will, and I apologize for being a little bit late, but y'all are motoring right through these public hearings, and I will not slow that process down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. David Weiss, Ozzy McMullen, 123 South Calhoun Street, on behalf of the applicant Good News Outreach. Again, thank you for the opportunity. Honestly, I just wanted to stand up and say that I appreciate staff, and I think the staff report does an excellent job summarizing the amendment. Did want to say that we do feel that the proposed amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan, land development code. We are happy to comply with the conditions, and we do agree with staff recommendation as well as the recommendation of the Planning Commission and Development Review Committee. So, with that, I'll happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weiss? Thank you, Mr. Weiss, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the commission?
Move staff recommendation.
Seeing none, it's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney, do we have any other items to come before us at the public hearing?
Mayor, just to clarify, 15.01, I think a vote may have been taken, but that was just, this is the first of two public hearings, so we just need to clarify that that was just to move to the next public hearing.
I did call for a vote, I do apologize. I think I actually stated in record that Mayor Pro Tem was out of chambers, but no vote was needed, so that's great. We'll vote on it at November meeting.
Thank you.
That's the worst I do this evening. We're doing all right. All right, do we have any other items before I said the official public hearing?
No, sir.
All right, this closes the public hearing, and we are now back on policy formation and direction. Item number 13.01, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have a number of public speakers. I'll set the issue up, and we'll proceed at your direction.
Okay.
We're at the point in the process to identify the next site for our TPD headquarters. As you know, we've been methodically moving through this, that is, a process that's predicated on the feedback of our community. Several months ago, we did a call for the public to share with us where they thought the next TPD headquarters should be, and we identified through that process 68 locations. Over the summer, you reduced that list down to 10 of the 10 best locations that were ranked and evaluated. From that 10, we reached out to the property owners of seven privately-owned parcels. Three of the 10 were owned by the city. Two indicated their willingness to sell, so that left us with a list of five. That's what's before us today. In accordance with our process, we reached out to the public via email, press release, as well as letters, direct letters, to solicit their input. We received it, it's tabulated in your agenda material, and so we're making a recommendation tonight to move forward with three properties, again, in accordance with what we had envisioned. Based on your direction, the properties we move forward with, we will take an even deeper dive, provide renderings, what could be on each site. I will tell you that each site would be unique, there's no doubt about it, whatever we pick, and we will do our best to reflect what could be there. So, that kind of sets the conversation up tonight. We've got a presentation by Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber, we can do that now?
Let's go ahead and have the presentation, then we'll take public comments, so everybody's speaking off the same page.
Very good. I'll turn it over to Cynthia Barber.
Ms. Barber, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and all assembled. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters' site selection process. I should be able to do it expeditiously since the city manager did probably six of my 10 slides, so we'll see, we'll see. Just to recap for the public, you did ask us to implement a process to engage the public. One of the things we heard from you is that you wanted to make sure the process involved intense community engagement and that it was a transparent process. In doing so, we received the 68 sites that were mostly presented by the community. We went back based on your feedback and talked with the owners of the properties, the top 10 properties, which are highlighted in red, to determine if they were interested in selling. And as the manager indicated, we only had two who were on the list, that's the Wynwood Center location, as well as the Town South Center. The other three sites are our very own sites, the current location for the, where the police department sits, the Northwood Center, which we recently acquired, and then the former wastewater treatment facility. And working with our consultant, we evaluated the 10 sites, came up with the five final sites, which today what we're recommending is that you ask the staff to do a further, a deep dive on the three city-owned sites. That recommendation is consistent with feedback that we received from the public, that site acquisition is a concern, and that if we own properties that are suitable, the recommendation was that we would build on those sites. Additionally, there would be other costs related to non-city sites, such as tenant relocation and lease buyouts and those kinds of issues. While there is a tenant at the Northwood Center site, the terms of the lease would allow the lease to expire, consistent with the timeline we have planned for the project. So, it is our recommendation that we proceed with one of those, those three sites. And what we would do, we would go back and dig even further with the community, work with the community to determine now, based on this particular site, and what else is in the community, what would we need to have included as a part of the police headquarters from an operational perspective? Of course, we know there are some minimum requirements, but based on the site, the uniqueness of the site, and the location in the city, perhaps there are some other features. We would work to do that with the community and then develop renderings that are very site-specific for those locations. Just to give you some comfort with the level of involvement that we've had from the public, we've sent out a letter to, over 600, 700 letters to the citizens who were located within 1,500 feet of the proposed sites, that we had to receive feedback from them, the 700 or so responses, and since the meeting has started, I think we received another 40 or so responses. It does not change the information that we received from the public, with the great majority of the public supporting the Northwood Center. Secondly, they supported the Town South Center, which is not a city-owned site. And then, thirdly, was the current location of the police department. This is just some background information, similar to what I just provided for you. Those are the actual numbers or percentages of responses, and basically, if they provided more than two sites, that they were supported, we gave them credit for both of those sites. Some characteristics about the particular sites, I just wanted to briefly go over that with you, it's listed in your agenda material. When you look at the Wynwood site, it is a site that, what we highlighted about the site was that it was a public transportation site, it was near existing infrastructure, it was near an existing city facility, and that there was parking and a structure on site. Some of the limitations we thought were the cost of the site, which was a $15 million selling price. It was the only site of the six that was not listed in the Blueprint 2020 Plan, which we thought if there was an opportunity to build it someplace where there would be other opportunities to leverage other projects and other funding sources, that would be a plus. There are some environmental implications that would be, we would have to address. We also indicated that there were a lack of traffic signals in that area. It was the site that was furthest from the rest of, furthest from the city center, and that there was a heavy tree canopy that would need to be addressed if we were to pursue that site. For the Lake Bradford site, for the Lake Bradford site, we said it was a city-owned site, so we would not have the acquisition cost. It was a public transportation site, it was located within the French Town and Southside CRA. It was located along the corridor of the planned airport gateway project, which, as you know, is a $100 million investment area. And then there was the additional city-owned facilities that were nearby, and then there was multiple traffic access points, and it was located in the multimodal district. Some of the limitations were that it was, it was 1.7 miles from the city center, that it was DEP, although DEP had addressed the past contamination and indicated no further cleanup at that time, based on what our construction on the site, there may be additional environmental impacts, including the potential to reduce the site for the airport blueprint project, which could reduce the site by approximately 20% or more. Then there were flooding concerns about that site, as well as interpretation by growth management about the amount of traffic and a concurrency study that would be required to utilize the site. The Northwood Center site was, is a city-owned site, is a public transportation site. It had the highest number of ingress and egress points on the site, which were five. It was a central location, it's about 1.3 miles from the city center. It's the most flexible in terms of a zoning destination, according to the growth management, in terms of an activity center, allowing for the police campus to be surrounded by other types of development that we would need in the community. And it's also located within the Lake Jackson, Lake Ella Greenway Blueprint Project. Some of the limitations is that we'd have to address the past contamination on the site and perhaps do further cleanup. There would be existing stormwater infrastructure that could be a concern for larger-scale redevelopment. The timing of the project, which, you know, is our recommendation that we wouldn't do the police campus individually or singly, that it would be done in conjunction with planning for the entire site, which would have some time restrictions or implications associated with it, and then the topography of the site, as well as it's not currently in the multimodal district. The Seventh Avenue site is a city-owned site, it provides public transportation, is centrally located, is less than one mile from the city center, is a close proximity to other city facilities, including our senior center in Lake Ella. It's located within the Lake Jackson and Lake Ella Greenway Blueprint Project for the 2020 Plan. Some of the limitations are the topography of the site, the traffic concurrency concerns, which is, you know, runs somewhat contrary to what we want to do with respect to community engagement at our police campus. The Seventh Avenue is a one-way, which further restricts access. Then the onsite fueling station would require perhaps, would have to be relocated in order to facilitate expansion on the site. Then significant streetscape, an onsite radio tower that would need to be temporarily relocated, and then they need to relocate the TPD staff temporarily and shore up a space that they could occupy and operate from. Then lastly, we had the South Monroe... Town South, which is a 2525 South Monroe site. It is a site where there's public transportation, it's close proximity to Star Metro, the planned hub for Star Metro. It's located in the French Town and Southside CRA. It's located within the Orange Avenue, Meridian Road Placemaking and Drainage Improvements Project Plan, and it's located in the multimodal district. Some of the limitations were the $5.5 million asking price, it's located in a FEMA digital flood insurance map zone, it's the direct accessibility to one major commercial travel corridor is a limitation, then multiple leases that would have to be managed, two of them are greater than the two-year term, there, in fact, we have one extensive lease on the property that would need to be addressed, then that could be the loss of retail and commercial destination in the community. Our next steps would be based on your direction regarding either reducing it to these three sites or directing us to consider other sites, would be to go back and do those, deeper dives with the community, bring back a plan to you. We have a, we need to do, we think would be a one to two-month timeframe to do a Phase One environmental assessment, a Phase Two would take us 12 to 14 months, and then Phase Three would be for us to, would take us 18 to 24 months for construction and move into a site. Unless you have questions for me?
Thank you. All right, let's take public comment. Mr. Cook, do we have one or two people that'd like to speak on this issue?
Mayor, depends on how you define one or two, but yes.
One or two hundred.
The first speaker on the item is...
How many speakers do we have on this item?
Between 20 and 25.
Okay.
About 30.
Mayor, as Mr. Sims is our first speaker and approaches, Kim Williams will be the second speaker. Also, I want to bring to your attention that a letter was delivered just this afternoon to the attention of the mayor and commissioners from a representative of the Wynwood property who asked that you not follow staff's recommendation of narrowing it to three and that you continue to include all five properties, their views, that they think their property would stack up well in a thorough evaluation, and so I wanted to be sure you were aware of that communication. With that...
I'd like to remind everybody, let's keep it civil. We've been through this one time already, and those were quite the meetings that we attended. Also, want to ask everybody to please stick to the three-minute limit. I'm going to enforce it. We want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak this evening. Mr. Sims, thank you.
Good morning, Mr., I mean, good afternoon, Mayor. You're right, we've been down this road three times, and all three times, people packed those meetings and said, "We didn't want this." Not only did they do this, they talked so plain and clear that Commissioner Curtis Richardson had touched this hard. He said, "Because y'all have come out here and said all of these here things, we don't want to do that." Now, Curtis, I get it, you believe in bipartisanship, you want Democrats and Republicans to work together, but the Republicans got to disclose all of what they're doing. I think it is unethical to have these shirts out here, who are also members of peacemakers. Now, you get state money from peacemakers, you're getting money for CAM, and you're getting money, you're working with the developer, but you say the police station is community wealth. Well, it look like in the community ain't getting no wealth. The wealth is stuck. The wealth is stuck. Why would we do eminent domain on Town South, take somebody's land, put a police station in a community where the people who live in that community has told you 40... in that community has told you four times, "We don't trust the po-po." Give us some time. Get us a new police chief. Work on that first. But right now, dropping them in our community is not what we want. I think that Kristique should be disclosed-
Let's, let's, let's keep the-
Well, it's out there now. Okay, well, you're on my minutes. You're on my minutes.
Mr. Sims, you will have time to make it up. Let's keep it civil. I don't want to start this conversation off this way. We are not going to do this tonight, folks. This is going to be a civil conversation that sets the example for every citizen, including my young boys that are watching this on TV. We are grown adults. We are not going to make this personal. You'll have your time. I promise you, Mr. Sims.
Okay, thank you.
But we are not going to start this off this way. Do I make myself clear?
Yeah.
Mr. Sims, go ahead and please finish.
And, Mayor, for information, I did pause the timer, so I'll start-
Absolutely.
You paused, no, 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 no. He was talking now. You didn't, you owe me about 12 seconds.
Mr. Sims, you are fine. Go ahead and finish your statements, please.
I want to keep them legal. But what I'm saying is, the people in these communities are being fooled, Mayor. You're wearing all of these hats. One minute you're a community organizer, the next minute you're an executive director, the next minute you're over to peacemakers, the next minute you're working with the developers. So we need to know what day you are and who day you are. And everyone needs to know that. I believe that the proper state for this here community, the, I want a police station. God knows I want one. But I believe, why would we buy more land? We just spent $6 million up here in North Monroe. I love, you want South Side? I can compromise. Lake Bradford Road is beautiful. We did get rid of a crap house and get a police house. Because if you notice, everything that Tallahassee don't want that we need goes to the South Side. They told us if we build an airport, it was going to bring the South Side up. It ain't happened yet. I just want this commission to know, it's to respect the people's voice of the South Side. If the people on the North Side had come out four times and told you no, will we be back on this? No.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kim Williams, followed by Kristique Henry.
Mr. Williams, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kim Williams, 2069 Cantigny Way. And I just came to share my idea with you about how this process might continue with, with all five, uh, prospects and you would review the return on investment. I hear a lot about the cost of the project, but the return on investment, a lot of it's human capital. And when you look down on Town South, you're looking at a neighborhood behind it that's got 57% below the poverty level. And what this town needs is jobs in those locations where they're most needed. Now, if these projects that we have to do, and we, we need to move the police station, could possibly incorporate a review, a deep dive into what the economic benefits are, the return on investment is for the project, not just that it works, that there's streets, that it does or it doesn't work, but that it actually will do something to improve the lives of Tallahasseans. We've got a high rate of unemployment. We've got a high rate of crime. And the best way I can think of to improve on that would be to provide an opportunity for people to grow into jobs that will sustain them over their lifetime. Now, I'm a part of Purpose Built Communities Board, and we have a project that would include health and wellness, education and housing. And the combination of the three with the efforts that they put together in Eastlake created a community where crime dropped 90%. Graduation rates went from 40% in high school to 100%. Third grade reading doubled. And, um, one thing, I forgot what it was. Anyway, it's a, it's a turnaround, and it's based on a long-term cycle to improve the lot of those who live in a neighborhood, and it affects all of the neighbors around them. So I would just encourage you to keep the door open to, and look at that as a part of this project. And if it doesn't make sense, then that, then certainly it doesn't make sense. But there's a bunch of people here tonight in support of this, and, and I have talked to a lot of people from South Side neighborhoods, particularly single moms, and they want the police station down there. I'm not here to promote the police station. I'm here to promote the economic development opportunity as it exists that might actually improve their lot. So thank you very much for my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it. Our next speaker?
Kristique Henry, and then Gregory James.
Ms. Henry, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kristique Henry. My address is 3121 Pontiac Drive. I am a resident and a business owner in South Side, Tallahassee. I echo many of Kim's comments today. It's very difficult to have agreement when you have two different philosophies at war. And I recognize that. There's two different philosophies here. There's a philosophy of economic development that is at war with many people's understanding of what community development is. And in order for that to combine, and in order for that to be expressed and balanced, it's going to take information, discovery and opportunity of learning on both sides to reach true consensus. There is a reason why the Town South Center was the priority placement for this police public safety complex. Back in 2013, under the auspices of the South Side Redevelopment Advisory Council, this is at the foothills of the worst economic recession our community had ever gone through. I had two homeowners who committed suicide because of the prospects of value for their homes. And I worked with over 700 of them in my professional state in order to help them mitigate the loss of their properties. So as I stand here tonight, I don't mind wearing my hats. I don't wa- mind wearing all of the hats that I wear because they all combined to say "love for community." And I think that that's what all of the people that are here tonight are about. Love expressed in making sure that opportunity is available for the citizens of South Side. 2013, the conversation has evolved from a super stop all the way to a full public safety complex. Wow. What a game changer that would be for the South Side community. Wow. What an implement and vehicle of value. It wouldn't be the only vehicle of value, right? But it would be a true vehicle of value for that community to be able to get the lives engaged in employment opportunities to that area and opportunities for health and for education and for homeownership, all of those things that build sustainable and productive citizenship. And to have it ripped away by special interests that didn't even come to the community, to have this conversation prior to ripping it away from the citizens who had legacy engagement is a disservice. So my appeal to you tonight and many of the appeals this evening will be, keep Town South on the list. There is a cost-benefit analysis to this that is magnificent. We need to discover it together as a community. There are impacts to this placement that are dynamic. We need to discover this as a community. There are examples in St. Pete, Orlando, different communities that have taken and put these complexes in, and now the universities have public safety institutes that the students are learning how to do community policing, and it's a recruitment tool for those.
Ms. Henry, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Our next public speaker, Gregory James. He'll be followed by Karen Gillespie.
Pastor James, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, Mayor.
Name and address for the record, please.
Name, Greg James. Address, 1134 Abraham Street. Um, while sitting there, because I'm a pastor, I immediately begin to think of a story, a visual, and, um, Commissioner Cox, I don't know how this is going to come across, but I thought about an ambulance going to a hurting neighborhood, but then I thought about an ambulance that was going to a neighborhood that wasn't. So even though, uh, Mayor, we've made at least a decision on three properties that the city owns, and even though those properties are owned by us as the city, question is, where is the biggest investment made? And as Mr. Williams has said, as Kristique has said, the South Side would be a great place for investment. Perhaps there are many who believe that putting the police department on the South Side is a police invasion, but I think it's a unique time for a different identity. An identity that will create for that area that needs a strong revitalization, an identity that will create improvement when it comes to business development, improvement, when it comes to a sense of security, a sense of safety and identity that will beautify that area. At the end of the day, as Mr. Williams has so eloquently said, it's about jobs. It's about the opportunity to create jobs that men and women can become gainfully employed. So I think it's an investment that has a high return, and we all know that when we make investments, we definitely look for returns. It would be a great one. I would say that even though there are three portions of land that the city owns, let's take in consideration one more, and that's Town South, because that's where we can find equity. That's where we can find a return. With that being said and done, I'd like to say, let's take that into consideration. Let's realize that at the end of the day, I look at it from this standpoint, I never, in my wildest imagination, Mr. Barber would have ever thought that I would be standing advocating for a police department. Never, ever in the wildest of my dreams, on the South Side of town. But after talking to so many residents and after understanding the value that it brings, I'm here as a formerly incarcerated peacemaker to say, peace would abide even the more on the South Side with the new complex in our presence. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Gillespie, and then Lakey Love.
I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Karen Gillespie, followed by Lakey Love.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I know that, um, our speakers are eloquent, but we're having trouble hearing from the applause. So if we could, you know, because we're trying to, we're trying to keep things moving, but if we're having to keep repeating, we know you applaud. We, we understand. But if we could just bring it out so we can hear, that'd be great.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Gillespie, 3692 Overlook Drive.
Please.
I've lived on the South Side most of my life. I attended Southwest Elementary School, which is now Pine View. I was a mortgage banker for 30 years. I'm now a Realtor. And as a banker and as a Realtor, I hear it all the time that the South Side is unsafe. I believe that if we continue, if we look at putting the TPD complex on the South Side, this perception will change. I ask that you take a look at my shirt, and it says "public safety is community wealth." And I'd like to add to that help. So please consider the South Side as the new, uh, place for the TPD complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker? Next speaker is Lakey Love.
Ms. Love, thanks for joining us.
And followed by Carlos Henry.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Lakey Love, I live at 1511 Melvin Street, proud resident of the South Side. And I'm here today to thank you and for gathering together to review this issue and to thank the city for its work. And I want to urge you, um, to follow the city's suggestions and stick with a city-owned property, um, that is central to town, um, for various reasons. Um, first, I don't think we need to invest in more private property when we have unused property and that we already, that we already own, that could bring green space and renovation and to those buildings and spaces that we already, um, that we already own as a city. I also want to urge you to stick to Northwood or to renovating the TPD headquarters that are currently in existence because they are central to town, which makes them equally accessible from the North Side, the South Side and central city residents. As a South Side resident, um, I, every day, am, am aware of overpolicing in my neighborhood, and I think that a South Side police headquarters, um, I don't agree with the term of a, of a public safety campus. I think we should call it what it is. It's a police headquarters, and it's a, um, 50 to 60 million dollar, um, investment. And I think we need to, um, invest in our environment and beautifying our city-owned spaces and renovating the land that we already own, um, to make this, this campus, this police headquarters equally accessible to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker? Next speaker, Carlos Henry, and then Marie Bryant.
Mr. Henry, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carlos Henry. I'm at 3121 Pontiac Drive. I am a longtime resident for South Side. Been living on South Side all my life, went to school on South Side, played sports on South Side. So I understand the needs of South Side, because I'm there. Uh, we invest on South Side. I'm actually a affordable housing, uh, provider for South Side. We do re- revitalization work throughout the neighborhood, and all the neighbors that I talk to are in favor of Town South. And that's why I'm here. I normally don't do the speaking. Uh, my other half usually kind of takes my messages in for me, but I thought it was very imperative for me to be here this evening because this is a very, very, very important issue for the South Side. And I think the South Side has been misrepresented. I think people are saying that the South Side don't want this. There are many people that I, that I engage with on a daily basis, I've been engaging with in the last few, few weeks, few days, uh, that are saying the same thing. We want South Side, and I think the city has seen that as well, even in the, uh, report that we just saw. The second leading site for the input of the, of, of the residents was Town South. That's it, that's significant. That shows that the, the community wants Town South. So I think it would be premature for us to make a decision to remove Town South off the list before we've done a real in-depth deep dive on Town South, to really figure out what is the, the economic benefit analysis. Because price doesn't always equate to cost. So we need a cost-benefit analysis on that, on that site, and I think it wouldn't be far-reaching, uh, for the, uh, commission to decide tonight to leave Town South on there. You don't have to make a decision for Town South tonight, but I think we're making a premature decision to remove it off the list if this is the second most favorite site. Why would we remove that from the list? It doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and I think as a commission to make that type of decision would be a disservice for your constituents because you haven't done a deep dive. And to remove that off the list will be a disservice for your constituents, especially if we look at it, at the end of the day, that site being, uh, bringing much more, uh, community stimulus than the other sites. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marie Bryant.
Ms. Bryant, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Marie Bryant, 518 Tall Top Drive, also the South City Neighborhood Association President. I also wanted to thank each and every one of y'all for all that y'all have done in our community. But from our last meeting, I just realized, from talking with community and talking to the ones outside of community, we has been very much educated. Kristique, I would like to say thank you, because you have done some great things to bring us up to speed to know what was, you know, really going to be behind the TPD, um, effort. Commissioner Richardson, thank you for all that you do in the community. Yes, South City Neighborhood Association do support TPD. We very much do. I read my Bible. My Bible told me to obey government. So we do obey government. But I also would like y'all to go back and look back at South Monroe Street and Lake Bradford Road. We definitely need a TPD atmosphere on the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker? Next speaker is John Washington, and then Paulette McFarland.
Mr. Washington, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Washington. I'm at 926 Apache Street. Thank you for having me here and the opportunity to speak. I did not grow up here. I chose this community for college, and since that time, much of that time, I've lived on the South Side. I'm a property owner there. I, I want to echo much of the sentiments that, I won't echo much of the sentiments that have been put out there, but I do want to say, um, that as a resident of the South Side, I think that public safety issue and the lives that are impacted by some of the criminal element that's there would be enhanced by the, uh, greater police presence. I'm asking that the commission would consider to leave on the list the Town South Center so that that can be studied further, and we can have some real analysis about the true impact of having the Tallahassee Police Department relocated on the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker? Is Paulette McFarland, followed by Amir Alexander.
Ms. Mc- Ms. McFarland, good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Pleasant afternoon. I'm Paulette McFarland. My address is 978 Stone House Road, which is off Appalachia Parkway. I am a real estate broker, an instructor at Florida A&amp;M University, and my church is at Crawfordville Road, which is on the south side. So I spend much of my time at the south side. I do have, I'm a property owner, so I have property on the south side. I have family members on the south side. And I'm really advocating for the police station to be in south side, town south plaza. I see the need for it, and I can see it generating as others advocate for the cost-benefit, because what that would do, that would improve development on the south side of town. Business hours can be extended, therefore that will generate employment. So I'm really advocating for the south, the Town South Plaza to be considered as a location for the police station. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Amir Alexander, and then Brenda Hawkins. Amir Alexander, do not see, so Brenda Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
The next speaker would be Betty Bellinfante.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Brenda Hawkins. My address is 1014 Silver Ridge Drive. I'm the president of Silver Ridge Estates Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking on the majority of my neighbors who wish to have the police station put in a Town South complex. Their major concern is, we want safety. Make sure they know that safety is our top priority. So we would love to have that police department in the Town South.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Our next speaker?
And as she comes forward, the next speaker will be Trish Brown.
So good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Betty Bellinfante. I live at 1012 Sales Drive on the south side. I, in 72, 1972, I bought my home on the south side. I concur with everything everybody else has said about locating the police department in Town South on the south side. We need that department there, and I'm with that. So I ask you strongly to think about that, reevaluate it and think about it. Because south side, right now, is not getting the attention that it should get, not from the city of Tallahassee, I feel. You can do better.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Our next speaker?
Is Trish Brown, and then Betsy Henderson.
Ms. Brown?
Then we'll go to Betsy Henderson.
Ms. Henderson? It's good to see you. Thanks for sticking around. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Betsy Henderson, and I've been a Tallahassee resident for nearly 30 years now. And I've been a stakeholder in South Side and Frenchtown. My property address is 2670 Lumbar Road, Tallahassee. I have worked in the south side of the city and also in Frenchtown. I worked on many city community forums and committees. I've done a lot of community improvement. I did 12 years with the Bethel CDC for affordable housing. I've done over 26 years as a real estate broker here in Tallahassee. And I have dealt with a lot of clients in the south side. I am talking tonight for not only myself, but for also some of other homeowners that live in the south side of town. And I would like to speak in favor of the police safety complex being located in the south side. The main thing I hear from people is safety in the south side, the perception of it not being good. People want to feel safe. They want to live in decent neighborhoods and good affordable housing. They want good schools. They want their property values to increase on south side like they do in similar parts of the city. And some people do oppose the complex on the south side. I do understand that. But when I talk to people about what they're, what do they oppose, it's mainly about the way they feel and not about the facts of the situation. They're concerned about police profiling and abuse, but I think if all of us listening to the news, we hear about police profiling and abuse all over the state, all over the country, and when we look at Tallahassee, we're not having, we're not half that bad. And I think police abuse is based on racial issues, and I think racial issues is based on learned behavior. And change is very painful, but it is necessary for progress. I remember when Cascade Park came about, there was a lot of opposition for it. But now looking at Cascade Park, I think it's one of the most-used parks in the city, especially in the evenings. I feel that, I understand the community concerns, but we also have to look at economic growth. And people have to take responsibility for what happens in their communities. They have to, by reporting it to the, what they see to the police, and be more proactive about that. And to add to what the city manager said about being in the CRA, we also have to remember that the south side location is within the southern strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly do appreciate it.
Stephen Beasley?
Mr. Beasley?
Ben Wilkinson?
Mr. Wilkinson, good to see you, sir. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ben Wilkinson, 3520 Thomasville Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think I'd have to concur with the gentleman in the hat and Mr. Williams, who spoke earlier on, on the matters of, I think it is becoming obvious, it may be premature to pull out properties and just go to the three identified, both for the community investment aspect that so many people have spoken to, but more importantly, at least my perspective, or as importantly, is the cost analysis part of it. And staff has done a wonderful job and, and an impossible task, but they presented the properties and they've given you pros and cons, and that's all well and good. But in the real estate business, which I'm in, you've got to look at what your end product costs, and you've got to figure out, how do I get there? I do represent the Wyandotte ownership, and our sticker shock is, is evident, but I think at the end of the analysis, it, it may become very evident that the, the final product is certainly in line or favorable compared to the cost of some of these other projects. I'm encouraging, and I think a lot of the people in here, to hold off before you throw everything out. Allow staff to go a little bit further, allow, allow them to put the cost analysis in place, see where they shake out at the end of that, both from the community aspect and the actual, the dollars and cents. But we've got 22 acres, 350,000 square feet of campus. It's beautiful. Trees, a lake, it's wonderful. It, it's interior tenant improvements or improvements to the buildings. The Northwood Mall is probably one of the best real estate plays in, in that we've seen in 30 years in Tallahassee, and kudos to the city for doing so. I think if you go put the TPD headquarters in that, the equity that you walked away from the closing table with is going to be severely impacting, go away. That's not the anchor for that type of facility that you want. So I think that, that needs to be plugged into your analysis as well. You've got a unique piece of property there that you, you've got for a song. Look at what you can turn that into, rather than, you're, you're not going anywhere, there's no added value. Yes, it's a, it's a, an obvious play at first glance, but I don't think the impact of the remainder has been looked at. Existing site, I think that's why we're here, is because that one doesn't work, or it's too small, or there's no room for expansion, so I'm not sure why that's in play. So what I'm, I'm repeating again is, give staff the time, give them a little bit of expanded scope, see what you're going to end up with at the end of their due diligence, and whether it's 10 million, 30 million, whatever that number is, then evaluate them, then take your citizen input and make a qualified decision from there. I think to repeat what everybody says, we're asking you to hold off on moving for those three and give them the tools they need to make a better decision.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker?
Jordan Scott.
Mr. Scott, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
The next speaker will be Ramona Abernathy-Payne.
Yes, my name is Jordan Scott. My address is 2291 Hartsfield Way, and that's 32303. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about hindsight, right? You know what hindsight is, 2020. So in 1994, I'm sure you're aware of this, the federal legislature passed a crime bill. There was a fair amount of support for this. MBR said, you know, it's going to put more cops on the, on the beat, impose tougher prison sentences, and give more money for prisons to house people, right? And there was a fair amount of people that were against this. Of course, there were people that stood up and said, hey, this is a really, really bad idea, you know, because it's going to increase prison populations, increase punitive justice. Well, where are we? Almost 30 years later, and it's very clear that this was a very, very bad idea. Hindsight is 2020. Okay, so when local governments implemented stop-and-search laws and broken-window policing, you had a fair amount of support for that. You know, people wanted to decrease crime, right? And there were powerful community members that came on, stood in support of that. But there were also people that objected. They said, it's going to legitimize profiling and increase incarceration. Well, guess what happened? Hindsight is 2020. We're here to tell you today that this is a really bad idea. It's a really bad idea to spend $60 million to build a gigantic police station. And yes, there are people that are coming out in support of this across the country. There was a whole convention in 2015. But there are people that are speaking out against this, these sort of 21st century police headquarters, right? And I'm speaking from, from this book. Justin Hansford is a professor of law at Howard University. He's one of these objectors. He says he was appalled. Many at the task force session contended that the Ferguson uprising indicated the presence not of bad law enforcement practices, but simply bad public relations. I reminded the task force that the United States has 5% of the world's populace, but 25% of the world's inmates. The incarceration rate of 750 inmates per every 100,000 citizens is nearly eight times the rate of the nearest comparable nations, Russia, China, and Iran. Also, this mass incarceration is concentrated along the lines of race. The combined state and federal prison and jail population that is nearly 43% black in a nation that is only 13% black overall. Significantly, this is not due to pervasive black criminality, but pervasive police and prosecutor, prosecutor racial targeting. For example, research has shown that five times as many whites as blacks use illicit drugs, but white, but blacks are sent to prison for drug offenses 10 times the rate of whites. Blacks make up 12% of the drug users, and 58% of those in state prisons for a drug offense. I want to say again, this is not a question, if you're questioning crime, if the question is crime, it's not a question of policing. We've tried over policing. We've tried to increase policing. It's a question of investing in bottom-up poverty and inequality reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Ramona Abernathy-Payne, and then Donna Cotrell.
Ms. Payne, it's good to see you. Thanks for sticking around. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. With consideration to the Wyandotte site, my neighbors have been discussing the issue. In the three dozen or so people that I've spoken to about the site, because it abuts our neighborhood, I've heard one person that was opposed to it. However, in a city, in a county, whose property base, property tax base is so restricted, I would advocate against putting this complex anywhere that would take additional land off the tax rolls as purchase of Town South would. It would make much more sense, or Wyandotte, either of those purchases, it would make much more sense to site the headquarters on property the city already owns. And I think the Lake Bradford South is on the south side.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Donna Cotrell, and then Nita Davis.
Thank you so much for coming out. Your name and address for the record, please.
My pleasure. Good evening. I am Donna Cotrell. I live at 703 Osceola Street. The last time I was here for the discussion about the TPD South Side complex, I heard some interesting things. I was an observer. I didn't speak. But one of the things I heard from a developer slash architect was, let's put this thing through so some folks can get paid. I also, with all due respect, Commissioner Richardson, when the discussion got heated, if someone said, you were emotional, you said, it's about black-on-black crime, that's what it's about. I wish I could roll the tape for you.
I would like to see that tape.
I would too, because it, the folks who were here with me heard you say that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
So you mean to tell me there's no crime in Sunnyside or Summerbrook? There's no crime in Kalarne? I think that we need to have a revisit. And one of the best, or the, the top number-one votes was for Northwood Complex. So why aren't we talking about the number-one top priority? The priority for me, I live on the south side now, and I go, I know my voice gives me away, I'm a transplant, but my family goes back five generations. I have cousins and uncles who live on the south side. I live on the south side. I live on a corner where kids walking to school in the morning have to walk in the street because there are no sidewalks. Now, folks want to get paid, I want to, who pays for those t-shirts?
Now, I would like to remind you to please keep it civil.
I'm keeping it civil.
And direct your comments towards the commission.
I haven't said anything that's not true.
I didn't say that. I'm asking for you to mind your tone, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
I have to say that when it comes to policing and crime, I've lived in areas where there were college students, there was a lot more crime happening from the hours of 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning than I see on the south side where I live. A centralized complex makes more sense. But let's talk about rehab programs for re-entering citizens on the south side. Let's talk about programs that help moms, like the mom who came and knocked on my door a couple of weeks ago because I was having a party and wanted food for her children. Let's have some, some talk about helping those in the food-insecure neighborhoods, building urban community gardens, wellness programs for the adults. We have healthy adults raising healthy children in our neighborhoods.
You have about 15 seconds.
So I'd, I'd like us to rethink the $60 million complex and think about how we can reinvest that money to support those in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I correct one thing? Ma'am, at the last hearing at the Walker Ford Community Center, a, as a matter of fact, both public hearings that we had, they were for us to listen. None of us made any comments.
I'm talking about right here in this building, the commissioner, the meeting that, that was supposed to be a slam dunk, it looked like, according to that developer, where it got heated. Oh, yeah, and, and it's on tape, and, and you did say that.
Okay. I'm going to review that tape.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Our next speaker?
Nita Davis, and then Sonia De La Cruz.
Davis, thank you for joining us. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Nita Davis, and I'm a homeowner on the south side at 1111 East Paul Russell Road. That's the south side, part of it. My family's been there since 1967. When my home was built, we had cows. So, in '56, actually. So you can see that we've watched a lot of changes. And I always say, I love the south side. I couldn't live anywhere better. I'm five minutes to downtown, I'm close to the beach, the mall's around the corner, okay? I don't want to go anywhere else. I love my neighbors, it's great. But, I will give a big but, I am tired of other people telling me, why do I live where I live? Isn't it dangerous? We'd never go down there and shop. Well, when I heard about this police department for the first time in over 25 years, I got so excited because I saw the spinoffs that could happen. I saw the businesses, I saw the people that would actually feel safe. Now, I feel safe in so many ways, even though I've had people jump my fences, and I've chased them with hand sanders and everything else. But I, you know, that's my home. But I'm tired But I'm tired of other people, and I know they would come if they feel safe. So this is the first time, do you know how exciting that is? Do you know how, I was like so tired of going to other parts of town and going, no, yeah, that figures, you know? But I'm on the South Side, so that's not going to happen. For the first time, I saw a real possibility. Don't take that away. And don't wash over like safety, like for the rest of Tallahassee, they don't look that way. That's reality. That's reality, you know? It is what it is. Like, you know, my brothers graduated from Rickards. So, I mean, we're there too. There's, it's not just black people down there. And, you know, we've got to remember that. And that's what we want. We want to foster, we want to foster all kinds of people coming in. And we could do that with putting it there at that shopping center. That would just, like I said, I could just see spinoff. And this is the first time my heart has felt good about something actually can happen down there. I mean, because we have had, you know, and I agree, we have all these programs. I mean, go over to Ridge Road, there's tons of things. I mean, you could fill up a boat with it. But we have to address those things. But you don't fill the baby out with the bathwater, right?
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Our next speaker?
Sonia De La Cruz, then Jules Bailey.
De La Cruz, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Sonia De La Cruz, 1113 East Paul Russell Road. I am a homeowner. I've owned my home for 22 years there. I went to Leonard Wesson. My family's been up on that hill since 1966. A lot of people are talking about the economic side of it. I do support the move to Town Center, but we talked about, you can't put dollars to the human side of this. This is an opportunity to engage the community as a whole, the kids. They talk about police fear, profiling, harassment. Well, we have to attack it straight on. We can't make change if we don't try. And that's the part that I'm hearing, a lot of people, they're afraid of change. And like other speakers have said before me, that we have to. It's going to be painful, but this will be good as a whole. And like I said, you cannot put dollars to the human value of this, to the kids. You're talking about the next generation's coming up. It may not impact the 18-year-old down the street, but it will impact maybe his little brother, who's three or four or five years old. So I think we really need to move forward, and I have talked to my neighbors. I have talked to, we don't necessarily have a block because we are on Paul Russell Road, but they are in support of this. And a lot of people are really tired of other people speaking, saying, I'm speaking for myself and the people I'm directly have spoken to, but that they're, we're all lumped together that they're not in support of this. That's not true. That's just a false statement. Everyone needs to speak for themselves or these representatives from the different neighborhoods. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Jules Bailey, then Alan Williams.
Bailey, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Jules Bailey. I live at 1919 Dossie Street. So I'm here today because we already had this conversation back in January and February. And yes, there may be, there may be a lot of people here that support the Town South Shopping Center tonight, but I will remind you, at both of those town halls, one by Seventh Avenue and one in the South Side, about two-thirds of people came out against having the police headquarters in the Town South Shopping Center, as opposed to only about one-third for. And I know that because we kept account. So I'm not sure why this is still up for consideration, because this was voted for, it was because Curtis Richardson proposed a vote to abandon the Town South Shopping Center. It was the front page news of the Tallahassee Democrat the next day. So I'm not even sure why that site was still under consideration. The majority of people, by the results of the emails or the phone calls, of the letters you've gotten, approve of the Northwood Center. The Northwood Center additionally is property, is additionally property that the city already owns. Also, a couple of points that I know I've said before, I know you've all heard me say before, the majority of people on the South Side rent. Property value is going up, probably sounds nice if you own property or if you sell property, but it's not going to be nice for the majority of people there who are looking at their rent going up. Purpose-built communities, and I do believe this is relevant, does not have a good history. It's been around since 2009. And if you see the, if you see the Eastlake Community by Atlanta, Georgia, that was the first purpose-built community, 25% of residents could return, including anyone who had a felony in the past could not return. That does not sound good for our returning citizens in the state of Florida. So I propose that we, so my vote is to move it to Northwood or to keep it, or to keep it where it is. If you're going to, I've looked at this stuff for purpose-built communities, if this is going to be part of it, look, the pictures there, they look beautiful. They have those, they have those three-story buildings over shops and stuff, the same way they do in College Town. So to me, I think that's who it's, I really think that's who it's marketing to. It does not look like place, it does not look a lot like places that families would want to live. If this is going to be part of it, I don't think it's a good idea. Also, I did go out to, I did go out to the South Side, and I will remind you, as I said, at the town hall back in, I believe, February, we got 50 signatures against it in about an hour out there. And if I could help Curtis Richardson play the tape and jog his memory in my last 10 seconds, that's going to be the City Commission meeting, January 30th, 2019. It's on YouTube under that title, and you start speaking at about 3 hours and 45 minutes. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Your next speaker is Alan Williams, and then Denzel Pierre.
Mr. Williams, it's good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, Alan Williams, 1201 Stony Creek Way. Thank you each and every one of you for your service to this community. It's great to be back here in City Hall, see so many familiar faces. I would tell you, as someone who grew up on the South Side, went to Leonard Wesson, Hartsfield, Fairview Middle School, Rickards High School, where I went there with Commissioner Williams Cox's son, and we were in Brain Bowl together and seeing so many other folks here that truly love the South Side of Tallahassee. I'll tell you, growing up there, I went to, I grew up there, I worked at Winn-Dixon Town South. It was my first job. Matter of fact, I got to bag Jake Gaethl's groceries and take him out to his car. He didn't, he didn't tip well, but, you know, I still got a good conversation and learned a lot of good things about family football. But I will tell you that what's most important, when you think about this community, and Friendship Permanent Baptist Church is my church, my mother still attends there. Pastor Franklin worked with so many others here on staff when Anita Fabius Thompson was city manager, to really say, we need more investment in the South Side. We need more security in the South Side. And so I would tell you today, you've got a very important decision in front of you. I would encourage you to keep Town South on the list and allow your staff, probably the best staff in all of America when it comes to city government, to be able to go back in and really determine what is the best use for all of those properties. When you look at the Northwood Mall Plaza, that's part of our gateway into our community, probably the best value that we probably let you own as an owner, landowner here in the city of Tallahassee. I'm sure you could probably get a lot more than putting another city-owned property there. I would encourage you to look at the current location, status quo. What does that really bring to the city? Does that give you anything else other than what you already currently have? I would tell you to also look at the property where the old wastewater treatment facility is. I'm sure Florida A&amp;M and Florida State are going to be vying for that property in the near future as they continue to spread, like the Villages are doing down South, down in central Florida. And then it brings you to the Town South Plaza. I would tell you that when you look at that, I think it's one of those properties that allows you to still keep that urban core, that urban feel, gives you close proximity to downtown. But as we know, within the Southern Strategy, we're only going, growing to the South. We're not growing to the North. All of the property to the North is in conservation easement. So we're not really growing North. If anything, we're going to grow South toward Waukulla and other places like that. So I would encourage you to look at that, keep that as a part of our community, as a part of the conversation as you look at that. And again, to all of you, each and every one, I know you have a very tough, tough decision to make, but it's an easy one, just to keep it in the mix. And I appreciate your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Representative, I am very impressed you were on the Brain Bowl team. Never knew that about you. That's good stuff right there.
But you notice he said he was with my son, so now, but, but, okay.
There you go.
He didn't do it alone.
There you go. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Denzel Pierre is the next speaker, and then following him will be Perry.
Pierre, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Denzel Pierre, 395 Prince Street. I feel like we've had this conversation many, 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 many times, and it's honestly tiring. We've seen 500 petitions online that show that people do not want the Tallahassee Police Headquarters in the Town South Center. We've seen the Tallahassee community erupt into uproarious applause, uproarious kind of celebration at saying, finally, some kind of recognition that the South Side is not the place to place this police department. Yes, you're investing in the South Side, but who are you investing in? The people in the South Side or the people with money in the South Side? Who are you investing in? The businesses in South Side or the people who shop at those businesses in South Side? Let's be realistic here. Let's be real with ourselves. Let's be explicit what this is about, and it's about money. It's about who can get that money from the police station being there. Let's talk about that. Let's think about that. Because these people that I see here advocating for the police department, I did not see a lot of them at the town hall. And I don't necessarily know if they were there or not. I can't say that for sure, but that's a point of it. I think we have to take into account exactly what's been happening in our city and exactly what will happen if we put that police department in the South Side. We continually keep on talking about changing things, wanting things to be different between the police and the black community. But I'm not going to lie to you, as a black person, as a queer person, I'm afraid when I see a police officer. We all are afraid when we see police officers. The black people in South Side are afraid when they see police officers. And we know through the statistics, through the data, through the studying, that they have been surveilling the black population in the South Side, that they have been surveilling the people on the South Side. People are saying, oh, well, you know, a lot of people say that the South Side and Frenchtown are really dangerous and scary places, but I've never had that reaction going there. I've never felt like that there. In fact, a lot of times, I felt safer there than I've ever felt at Florida State University. A lot of times, I felt better there than I've ever felt at Florida State University. And I wonder why every time a black community puts itself inside a center of someplace, all of a sudden, the place is scary. Because when I first came to FSU, I remember people saying, don't go to Frenchtown. Frenchtown is scary. And I was like, why is Frenchtown scary? Because there's a bit few, two black faces there. Let's be honest and realistic with ourselves about what is happening here. Come on, y'all. We cannot put this police station in the South Side because it is endangering the lives of the people on the South Side, and I'm being real about that. And I'm not saying that the police are necessarily the people who support the police station being in the South Side, want to endanger the population of South Side. But let's be honest and realize that these connections, these fractions between the black community in the South Side, between not just the black community, but the lower-income community in the South Side, and between the police station, aren't going to go away just because you moved the police station there. Don't try to gentrify an area to make things better, because that honestly isn't good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Perry. I just have one name?
Parvati Bhanoi.
Okay. And then the next speaker will be Isabella Casanova, and I can check with the few folks who weren't here, but other than that, that's the last speaker I've got.
Hey, thanks for sticking around. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Parvati Bhanoi, and I live in 221 Lincoln Street, and I'm a new resident in South Side. I just want to, you know, speak in solidarity with everything that has been said. I'm new to the neighborhood, so, you know, I have to be humble about the fact that I don't know as much as folks that have lived here, there for many years. But I think, you know, one of the people that I read this last year, who's a professor in UC Irvine, his name is Frank Wilderson III. And I think that, you know, what he talks about in terms of what structures the US and perhaps the world, you know, in terms of anti-blackness, you know, settler coloniality and white supremacy, I think plays itself out in the South Side. And I think that Denzel, they were very clear about how, rather than investing in, you know, food, in sidewalks, there's a lot of land around, there's a lot of possibilities of urban gardening, rather than investing in possibilities for kids to play in or, I don't know, public spaces or parks, instead, there is an investment in the police. And I think that speaks to anti-blackness in this world, and I think that Professor Wilderson talks about that. So I just want to stand in solidarity. I know that as a resident of South Side, I have felt very welcome and very warm, you know, relationships with everybody. But unfortunately, people live in a world that is structured by these relationships. So with that said, I just want to say that, thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Isabella Casanova.
Ms. Casanova, it's good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Isabella Casanova. I live on 1147 Academic Way. I was here in January and February a few months ago, I'm sure some of you must remember, because a lot of us were out here because we were canvassing in South Side for weeks on end in the very place that you proposed to move the Tallahassee Police Station Headquarters to. And overwhelmingly, people said, no, why the hell would I want a Tallahassee Police Station here where this is where I get my food currently? Are the cops going to give me food? No. So I just would like to point out, we did canvassing for weeks on end, and I think if we did canvassing again, because we had very short notice of this, we would get the same result. You know, I'm not here to say that I don't think that there should be, like, people who say that they want the police station and they want more security and whatever, okay, I can understand maybe why you would want more security, but do you really want security from the Tallahassee Police Department that has been known to inflate crime rates in the South Side? That has been known to lie about surveilling the people in the South Side because they want to gentrify the South Side? They're using these false crime rates to justify the fact that there's more crime in the South Side. You're lying about the numbers, and it's been proven time and time again. I shouldn't have to bring up the same points that I brought up last time in January and February. We had town halls in the South Side where the majority of the people who were there were against the move to the South Side. Why are we still having this conversation? You asked for community input and we gave it to you months ago. So why is this still a question? It's a question because you want to make money and you don't, you don't care about the input from the people who live there. The people who are saying yes, that they want this, it's because they can profit off of it, not because they actually care about the security of the place that they live in. And if they do care about the security and whatever, and they want this police station there, then I don't even know what to say to you, so. Yeah, you can laugh at me all you want, but the numbers don't lie. TPD has been proven to lie about crime rates in the South Side. Why would you want liars to survey your community and supposedly keep you safe? What else are they going to lie about? So I still have 40 seconds left, but I don't have anything else to say, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker?
The only speaker cards I have left are individuals I called earlier. I'll just run through those names real quickly in case they have come back to the chambers. Stephen Beasley.
Mr. Beasley, I do not see him.
Trish Brown.
Trish Brown?
And Amir Alexander. No further speakers.
Great. Would you like to speak on this item? Please join us. Your name and address for the record, please. We are, we are, we are talking about, so we're talking about the potential sites for the police station?
Oh, yeah, I've been watching.
And if you'll please fill out a card after the fact and turn it into the card.
I will. He told me to come on in.
Great.
311 Gale Avenue, Sylvia Hubbard. What I think is a shame is that the public didn't even know about this. We voted on it, we've talked about it, and what's really more of a shame is that you people on the South Side voted for a commissioner who is afraid to walk outside his door.
Sylvia.
And when he go to meetings. And when he go to meetings.
Sylvia.
Yes.
I'm going to ask you, as I have asked all the speakers this evening, let's keep the remarks not personal. We want to hear what you-
Well, I was in this meeting.
Ms. Hubbard, I'm asking you, please, to keep it civil.
And to stir up that and tell people this is the last option in order for the South Side to get anything, I think it's a disgrace. I think it's a disgrace that all the people live on the South Side think the only good thing can come to the South Side is a police station. Now, that's what I think is a shame. All of this money that is distributed throughout Tallahassee, and the only thing you can bring that's going to bring the value of the land, solve the crime on the South Side is the police station. Really? You people don't think enough of yourselves. You should have been up here raising hell about the money on all these other streets that never make it to the South Side and commissioners that don't speak up for the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate you coming. Do we have any other public speakers?
We do not.
Okay, let's blend it up for discussion amongst commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim.
You know, I get beat up at every one of these, but let me tell you something. I've lived in Tallahassee for 45 years now. I've spent a good part of my adult life in public service, serving the people of this community. I have lived on the South Side of town for 25 years now. My wife and I chose, chose to build our home on the South Side of town. Chose to build our home on the South Side of town because we believed in the South Side of town and wanted to see change come to the South Side of town. We wanted others to see us as an example, as a professional couple who chose to live on the South Side of Tallahassee. We have raised our family, our two daughters, on the South Side of Tallahassee in the home that we built on the South Side of Tallahassee. I've invested in the community. I've been a Neighborhood Association president for the 25 years that I've lived in my neighborhood, working to alleviate crime in our neighborhood where my home has been burglarized twice. My cars have been burglarized in the driveway of my home. And when I needed someone to come and investigate that, I didn't call, I called the police because I wanted them to come under those circumstances. So I apologize to nobody about, number one, my public service, my commitment to this community, and what I see as being the need and needs on the South Side of town because I lived there. I talk to my neighbors all the time. I attend Neighborhood Association meetings and neighborhood events and churches. I attend church on the South Side of town. I shop at the Piggly Wiggly grocery store consistently, supporting African-American businesses on the South Side of town. I apologize to nobody about that. Nobody. And so what, when this issue came up, the Town South Shopping Center was the only site that we had recommended to us on the South Side of town. And so we were moving forward with looking, looking at the possibility. There were issues, but we were looking at the possibility. There were the lease issues that Deputy Commissioner Barber talked about. There were the retail issues that were talked about. There were other issues, but we were looking at the possibility. When the new commission came on board, they said, well, let's go back to the community and get some more input on this thing. I said, fine. I was all for that. We went to the senior center, we went to the Walker Forward Center. We got input from the community. Based on what I heard, I came back and said, you know, maybe there's not an appetite on the South Side of town for this. Based on what we heard at the public hearings, let's take it off the table. I made the motion. I think it was Commissioner Matlow that seconded the motion, if I'm not mistaken. We voted unanimously to take it off the table. That's what caused us to go back and start the process all over again and make it a wider search and ask the community for recommendations. Had not I done that, we may not be where we are now. Because I wanted to see us broaden, and so that's where we got the 60-some sites for that we narrowed down to 10 and now down to five. That's what brought us to this point in time. I apologize to nobody about my service on this commission because I know what I've done in this community. I apologize to nobody for that, the time that I put into serving this community and the time that I'm away from my family, when many of the others are at home resting, watching television, doing what they do. I'm out serving this community. And I don't ask for any accolades or pats on the back for that because that's what I ask this community to allow me to do, is to serve her. And she has done it in three different capacities now. And I do it to make sure that everybody has an opportunity wherever they live in this community to feel like it is an all-America city, that they can feel safe. And we have worked as a commission to ensure that our police department has the resources that it needs. But it's beyond policing. It's community engagement. It's neighborhood associations working together to address crime in our communities. It's neighborhood organizations working together, along with police, building relationships, walking in 90-degree heat in the summer in our operation-safe neighborhoods, walking through those neighborhoods where crime is prevalent, talking to the residents about what they want, providing them with resources. I've done it every summer. And so what I'm looking for is two things. Based on what I know as a resident of the South Side of Tallahassee and based on the people that I've talked to, they want to be safe. They want, as the police are doing now, for their neighborhoods to be patrolled. Somebody talked about the cameras earlier. Well, the Bond community asked for those cameras. They weren't imposed on that neighborhood. They asked for those surveillance cameras. And you know what? When we put them there, we saw a rapid 30% drop in crime in the Bond community. 30%. No one had ever made that kind of commitment to public safety in the Bond community before. We want to feel safe on the South Side of town. You heard it from people who live there. These are residents. They aren't paid by anybody. They have paid dues to live on the South Side of town. I've watched my property values drop. And like I said, it's just not me. But I've made that commitment to making our community better for everyone, regardless of where they live. So where we are now, I want to see the police campus on the South Side of town. We have some options now, more than one. And I want to see both of those options advanced, to do the cost-benefit analysis because there are tremendous benefits. And for those that think that things aren't going to change on the South Side of town, they are changing. We're about, the Tallahassee Housing Authority is about to redo their 400-unit complex on Orange Avenue. Capital Regional Medical Center has cut the ribbon on their standalone emergency room. There are apartment complexes going up in that area. The VA Clinic is there, an office complex. And all of those people could come to the South Side and spend money and support the businesses on the South Side. But they've got to feel safe doing it. And so I want to see both the economic benefits come to the South Side as well as the public safety benefits of what we're talking about. And so what I'm, and I would ask of the commission, is that we do keep the Town South Shopping Center on the list to do the cost-benefit analysis for the four sites. We've heard issues with every one. And so I would ask this commission that we do keep the Town South Shopping Center on the list so that we can do that deeper analysis to find out if it's appropriate to go back out to the public and get true public input, not this trumped-up stuff, but true public input from throughout the community, because this will be a community asset. Certainly, those in the general area will be impacted, but this is a community asset. Every taxpayer in the city of Tallahassee will invest in this facility and their public safety regardless of where they live. And so we want everybody's input. And so that's Curtis Richardson's position. If anyone wants to question it, I'll be more than happy to schedule an appointment. I'll look at any tape or audio recording that you may have. But I apologize to nobody for my service to this community and what I've done to make Tallahassee better for all of her citizens. And so thank you all for indulging me on that, but I just felt like I needed to put that out there because obviously some people don't know. And, and so I felt like I had to set the record straight in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues for indulging me.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and weigh in. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out and staying. This is one of these where we have a lot of people that speak, and so it's late, and we still have more to come, and so it'll be a good evening. And I also want to say that I do support our police department and the good men and women. Appreciate everything that y'all do each and every day trying to keep us safe and those men and women of the Sheriff's Department and all of law enforcement. So I strongly believe that we should move forward with staff recommendation of the three parcels that are owned by the city, and I'll tell you why. First and foremost, we've been down this road. We had three public hearings. The largest majority of people that came out, 2/3, were very, very, very vocal. Now, I don't think we're ever going to have a perfect scenario of a public hearing where you truly get a full sense of exactly what everybody in the community looks for. The best we can do is offer up as many opportunities for citizens to communicate with us and to get out in the public and truly hope that people will come and engage. But at some point, we also have to make a decision. We have to move forward. And I feel very comfortable with the fact that we held three incredible meetings earlier this year, very passionate speakers on both sides, but the largest majority were not in favor of Town South. And we took formal action as a commission, a unanimous vote, to abandon the Town South property, reopen up our discussions, listen to the community, and yes, the Northwood Center by far, by far, very loud, very clearly, largest majority of the city strongly supports that as a number-one option. But let's also talk about the return on investment, okay? Town South was a bad deal to begin with. Purchase price for it is $5.5 million, and that dates back almost a year ago, correct? I'd be willing to bet that the purchase price of Town South now would not be $5.5 million. Plus, you add into the fact that there are long-term leases that would need to be bought out, which I believe the estimated value was another $1 or $2 million, rough. From a planning perspective, what, 1/3 of the parking lot is in a FEMA flood zone? It is not a good business investment. What we hear loud and clear is the fact that we need, and we believe as well, economic revitalization in the South Side. So I think the real question that needs to be discussed is, is a police station, and I agree, I think like you're the one that brought it up, this is not a public safety complex. That complex is out by Tom Brown Park. This is a police station, okay? Is that really going to spark the economic revitalization that we're all looking for on the South Side? It would do some, I'm sure. New construction would. But the truth is, we need to think bigger and bolder. I am, I can't remember who the speaker was, but I have been to Atlanta, and I have seen the purpose-built community, and I am a true believer in it. And I do think that it is going to do amazing things. And I think with the school district stepping up to the plate to provide a facility first and foremost, and as we grow and we move forward, and this commission has dedicated millions of dollars through the CRA, through the Greater Bond Neighborhood Association Revitalization Plan. And your city commission has spent nearly $100 million in the past 15 years, south of Tennessee Street on water issues alone to prevent the flooding that's taken place from Leon High School all the way basically to the county line. And if you think about the $1.3 million, I believe, $1.2 million that we have already committed to the revitalization of public housing down off of Orange Avenue, which is only the tip of the spear. I mean, we believe in revitalization, and we are going to move forward with our priorities. And we are investing a significant amount of money, and we still have a lot of work to do. But I am not going to support Town South as a potential location for the police station for the reasons, number one, it is not the ideal return on investment from a business standpoint. It is not the appropriate site to look at from a zoning perspective in the floodplain. It is not the ideal situation after three public hearings and a formal vote, unanimous vote that this commission had already decided, which opened up this entire discussion. And the fact of the matter is, is that I believe that we own three incredible parcels. We do not have acquisition costs. Any one of the three parcels has significant benefits and also hurdles that we will evaluate. So I say we move forward with the staff recommendation, but yet always keeping the forefront of our mind, economic revitalization as a priority on the South Side of Tallahassee for this community. My two thoughts. Commissioner Matlow.
Great, thank you. First off, I do, thank you for those who are able to keep it civil. We are here because of Commissioner Richardson's decision. We came in as new commissioners, objecting to the process and how we got there, and maybe that site-specific, but Commissioner Richardson had been doing, committed to that project for a year or two previous to that. So for him to come in and listen to the public and really want to reach out for more information, I think is very admirable, because I think we did need more community input, and we've received it. We received it tonight. We received it at multiple town hall meetings. And I think, you know, we learned is, there's very conflicting opinions on that site, right? And other sites, maybe the opinions aren't quite as conflicting. I think all of the pros that we've heard about economic development for the Town South location could also apply to the Lake Bradford site. It's similar neighborhoods, you know, similar rewards that could be realized from going to that site. So I'm not interested in talking about Town South again personally. I think it's just, yes, 200 people here, there'll be 500 people, there'll be 1,000 people, and we'll be in the same place, and we just need to make a decision. For me, I think we can just take that one off the table. I will support the staff recommendations, but I'd also, to me, the sites that I've been hearing about and people coming to my office and talking about and neighborhood associations, to me, it's been about Northwood Mall, and it's been about Lake Bradford. Those are the two that I would be willing to support going forward. I would narrow it down to those two today because I don't think the current site is a good location. I think it'll be a logistical nightmare to try to temporarily relocate.
I would second that motion if you would like to make that, to narrow it down to Lake Bradford and to the Northwood Center.
Can we continue?
Yeah, we'll definitely come for comment. Is that a motion that you would like to make?
I'll make that motion, but to finish my statement.
I will second that motion, go back to your comment, then we'll come to you, Commissioner Williams Cox, and we'll come to you as well, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, and of course, Dr. Bryant.
And I want to go back to the comments about investing in the South Side because I am committed. We've had this conversation previously, and we all pretty much unanimously agreed that we do need, we owe investment over there, and we should make it. So for me, just rough math, we bought Northwood Mall with the anticipation that we would redevelop that site. We would be committed to what that becomes. We could do the same thing for Town South. If the police station ends up at Northwood Mall, I would 100% be in support of taking public ownership of Town South, making sure we have similar businesses in place, making sure we don't get rid of grocery stores, making sure there's a place for clothing and walking distance to the area, making sure that there's a Chinese restaurant and other restaurants in there. I would support that. And just rough math, you know, that $6 million that we would give to a property, we're considering selling downtown property for about $8 million. There's $14 million in blueprint dedicated to the fairgrounds. We could get to a $30 million project pretty quickly and come up with something that could be life-altering for that plaza, and it could bring the same type of development and economic benefits that I think people want to see, and we could have a community process that lays out how to get there. So if that's somewhere people want to explore going down there later, I'm 100% open to doing it. And I'm not interested in the Town South at this location, but I do think I met with Deputy City Manager-
met with Deputy City Manager Barber to hear her view about the police station and her vision, and she said, like, in her mind, she could see this being like Vanderman Crossing in the area, and I agree with that vision. It could be something very special, and we could put money into it, and we could put thought into it, and it could be something everybody could take ownership of.
Currently, a motion on the table to narrow the list down to two proposed sites, which would be the Northwood Site and the Lake Bradford Site. Motion made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the mayor. Commissioner Williams Cox, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I feel like Groundhog Day. Seriously. I made some notes, and you know, I think I'm pretty bright, you may think differently, but if you own a property, why go buy a property when you can use your own property to do what you need to do? $5 million for Town South, $15 million for Wynwood, why do that when you already have property that's suitable? Why, and I said this back then, we can have economic development without a police station. We're already doing it. Bond, we've committed, as the mayor already mentioned, I made a list, maybe perhaps you're not aware, $6.5 million already committed to bond. Purpose-built, $100,000, plus Orange Avenue Apartments, I forgot, $1.3 million. We got a blueprint project for the Superstop at the Star Metro, and we already got a temporary park over there that was full of people until we made it look good. And every time I drive by there, there's nobody there, underutilized. But we put it there, investing in South Side. Family Way Extension, that's investment in South Side. And we have so many more things. We got a priority list for sidewalks, lighting. I like, the rest of the commissions here, I am committed to making the South Side a better place, not just the South Side, but Tallahassee a better place. But Tallahassee can't be a better place without the South Side. So, I'm committed to doing that. I live there, I love, I love where I live, I lived there for 30 years, I've worked in the community, and what I, I just don't like someone saying, if you do this, then we're gonna do this. Do it anyway, because too many times, we've been told, if you do this, we'll do this. We do it, and then they find a way for it not to happen. Amendment for Pastor James and Stanley. If you get it on the ballot, if the people vote for it, we'll do it. But what happened? Somebody had a bright idea to do something different. So, I'm tired of being lured by one thing, by dangling a carrot, and then something else happened. We got something good going on here, and we need to keep it going. We're investing on the South Side, and if you're not aware of it, make an appointment and come see me. We'll show you dollar-for-dollar what's happening on the South Side. We can show you the investment without the police station. We can do that, because that's what we're doing, day in and day out. We're in all of these meetings and all of these places, because we are invested, not just in city, we're invested in the school district. I'm not happy that we got third-grade reading scores so low in some of our South Side schools. We're out there working, trying to make a difference on that. It is not a tunnel vision that you have here. We are looking at the whole picture, because when people look at Tallahassee, they're not looking at parts of it, they're looking at all of it. And speaking of Town South, and I was looking for Wayne, Wayne, I see you right here. I heard from a very good authority that someone has pulled a permit or has applied for a permit to make some renovations at Town South. Does that sound, doesn't sound like, if that's what, if that is true, it doesn't sound like they're trying to sell it. Okay, well, check that out for me. Someone told me that yesterday. So, if that is true, then that means that they're not interested in selling, or if they are interested in selling it, they're trying to get their price up.
There you go.
And, you know, we can't just come along and just, you know, there is a bottom to this bucket, and we're trying to spread it out to everybody, because everyone matters. So, I do support that we use our, the property that we already own, that we already own, and don't go paying for somebody else's property, or as we say, don't go chasing waterfalls, stick with the ones you know. So, that's what I'm saying. I support the motion.
Dr. Bryant.
Let me thank everyone, first of all, for coming out and sharing their opinion that receiving input is really what this commission is grounded in, in case anybody has missed that. But I support the motion as it is provided. I think that the whole idea of the police station itself, us utilizing money to move people out, to actually do construction, et cetera, I don't know if it doubles the price, but I know it's way beyond what it would be. So, I'm definitely in favor of taking that off the table. And I agree wholeheartedly, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Commissioner Williams Cox said, but we have gone through the process, and we are where we are. Now, can we do economic development on the South Side? I mean, she gave you many things that are already in the hopper, but there are many things to come, and I think we need to actually be broad-minded and keep, hold your commission responsible for identifying other ways for economic development, as we're going to do anyway, and then ensuring that it happens. We're back to accountability. So, I'm in favor of the motion.
Excellent. Motion on the table made by Commissioner Matlow is to narrow down the recommended site selection to the Northwood Center and the Lake Bradford Road Wastewater Treatment Plant, was seconded by me, the mayor. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of final comments, and thank you all for indulging me on this. But I just wanted to say that the reason I made the motion to take the site off the table when I did is because we listened to the public. We heard at two public hearings at the time that they weren't interested in it being at the Town South Shopping Center. I heard that, I made the motion, we took it off the table. But the way it got back was because when we went out for recommendations, it was one of the sites recommended. That's how it got back in that list of 60 or 70, or whatever it was, and made the final list of 10, and then, so that's how we, it got back on the list. It was recommended by people in the community. And so, I made the suggestion that I made earlier, because we did have a significant number of people that came today who live in the area, who work in the area, volunteer in the area, who said it was something that they would be interested in. I didn't make a motion, but I made the suggestion that we consider it. But I support the motion. I support, I probably shouldn't play my hand now, but I do support the Lake Bradford Road Site for one, for both reasons, for what it will bring to that area, and I know that there are neighborhood associations interested in that. But one of the things that I've been interested in since I came to the commission and we approved the fire services fee, Mr. Mayor, when that study was done, it called for a fire station in the area of Lake Bradford Road and gamble, because that area was identified as an area where there were more calls for service and a longer response time from our fire department. And so, since then, I have been advocating for a fire station in that area. And so, when we did have some options for the police campus, and I call it a police campus, because I hope that we have more included in that than a police station. I think it was always envisioned that we'd have community amenities included in that, maybe some recreational facilities, because there's not a park in that area, I don't think, to, that's in close proximity to Providence and Callan and some of the other neighborhoods in that area. And so, I would hope that if that is the site that's selected, that we would consider co-locating a fire station in that site to meet the need of that need of the residents on the South Side of town. But I think it could have broad economic development benefits for the South Side of Tallahassee. And so, yeah, so I, and I, Commissioner Williams Cox, thank you for enumerating all of the initiatives that we do have going on and will come up with in the future to invest in the South Side of Tallahassee and bring our part of the community along with where we've invested in other parts of this community as well. So, Commissioner Matlow, I support your motion and look forward to staff coming back with the recommendation. I hope that supports where I am, where we are, I think. But let's see what we come back with and how we move forward with this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow, the final, Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Williams Cox. Okay, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I had a question. The next step, I think, according to this, will be not for staff to come back with recommendations, but isn't it to come back with renderings?
Mr. Manager, you wanna weigh in on how we're proceeding from here?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. I think that it's good for everybody to know. So, if you vote and proceed with the two locations that you've indicated, we will come up with renderings. I think Commissioner Richardson, I don't think I'm saying anything out of school, I would expect one would include some fire presence somehow. They will not be the same, and then we will get public input on that as well. The whole process that you guys have directed us to follow is one where we provide public opportunities to give input. So, that'll be part of it. It'll be renderings, what could be, they will not be cookie cutter, they will be site-specific. It will take us some time to do this, narrowing to two helps that, and then we'll also have public input.
Excellent. See, no further questions. All those in favor of the motion on the table to narrow the site selection down to two sites, the Northwood Center and the Lake Bradford Road Wastewater Treatment Plant, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Okay, we are on 13.02. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'd like to invite Wayne Tetter up to help me with this presentation. And I'd also like to recognize someone that's been in attendance with us. I think he just learned a lot about Tallahassee. But Mr. John Campbell, he's from Metronet, and this is Jermaine, Metronet, the item is Jermaine to Metronet's business. As you know, last year, we were engaged with Metronet, they're a broadband communications company, they were interested in coming to Tallahassee. They serve, I believe, now more than 80 communities around the country, and we started engaging with them in terms of what they might need to come to Tallahassee.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. Could you please repeat what you said?
Yes, sorry. No, we're not talking to her.
Phone's going crazy. We'll have to deal with that later, but someone's listening in on our conversation. We'll see about that. Anyhow, pick up on my comments. So, we engaged them deeply. Wayne Tetter led that charge, but it included numerous departments to see what we could do to make sure that we were open for business, that we were business-friendly, in particular to open a market that you have expressed such interest in, in terms of making sure our community had broadband access, in particular, to certain neighborhoods. That's taken quite a while, and I'm pleased to say that we're making a recommendation that I think will bring new companies and new service to our community, and we're seeking your support. In particular, we're seeking your support to change our policy and joint-use agreement on our utility poles. It turns out, in our utility, on our utility poles, we reserve space for streetlights. That space, if freed up, could add communication space, which would enable more broadband service in our community. And so, we're making a recommendation that we change our standard and open up our market to more broadband. So, I think I've covered it pretty well. You may have some questions. Wayne, do you have anything to add? And again, I just wanna thank Wayne, and I did this to Cynthia earlier, didn't I?
He's an equal opportunist.
I'd like to thank Wayne, and Rob, and Renetta, and Karen Jumaville. It really was a team effort, and I think this really will serve us well moving forward as we engage companies looking to come to Tallahassee and do business. But Wayne, please help me if I've missed something.
I think all I could add at this point is that, two things. Number one, this is not going to be, we approved this tonight, and they are opening up service tomorrow. It's gonna be a long process, about two years for their initial build. After that, there's even more plans for even greater build, but that's the, the company would have to speak directly to that. The process is gonna be pretty significant, pretty burdensome from a staff perspective. We have staff lined up, though. We want them to make sure that they understand customer service is our business. We're here to welcome businesses, especially when they're trying to provide economic opportunities for our community. So, we've been meeting on a monthly basis. We started on a monthly basis just recently. We're gonna continue that all the way through their construction. So, as we're dealing with the permitting issues, as we're dealing with the community issues that are raised, as they're going through the communities and putting, and serving those communities, we will be there every step of the way with them to make sure they have a smooth transition. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Clerk?
We do not have any speakers on this item.
That's excellent. We'll open up for public, for discussion, but let me jump in first and say, for those of y'all that are here, this is very exciting that are here in person, because with the new commission, this policy change opens up the door to the first large-scale investment in our community from an outside company that is coming to Tallahassee. I mean, you wanna talk about an economic development, and I'm not gonna put dollars into the words of the, of the company that's coming, but we're talking, you know, 75, 80 million, $100 million investment in our community. So, first and foremost, to the company that's thinking about coming, we welcome you with open arms. Thank you very much for considering Tallahassee as your gateway into Florida, and we look forward to working with you, and we hope that we have impressed you up until this point, working with staff and getting everything lined up, and we look forward to being great community partners with you, and thank you for investing in Tallahassee. Could not be more thrilled to have Metronet here. Opening it up for conversation, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I too wanna say welcome to Tallahassee. It's, to me, it's a game changer, specifically because of the areas that you're gonna be concentrating in to provide the fiber necessary to help the investment on the South Side, because the areas that you're, that you will be, that was named specifically, lead to that, because the South Side and Greater Frenchtown. Our children and our family need other options. I think that it would also help educationally, so that they will have access to the World Wide Web and being able to do homework and being able to apply for jobs and being able to do those kinds of things. So, I think that this is a great game changer, and I like competition, if you understand what I'm saying. So, I'm glad you're all are coming to town, it's only gonna make what we do better. And I know, I think in some of our conversations, you're gonna be doing some hiring locally, that's gonna help, because I like for people who come to town to spend money, some, you know, additional money. So, thank you all for the commitments that you've made, and we look forward to working with you.
Commissioner Williams Cox, are you making the motion for option number one?
I am.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor pro tem. Commissioner Matlow, I've got you for comment.
Sure, thank you, and, you know, this has been a topic of conversation for a while, bringing fiber optics to our community, which I think is huge. I asked for some points of clarification, because as we all know, economic segregation's a huge issue to Tallahassee. It's a priority for this commission to make sure we're addressing. Our local Chamber of Commerce has declared it an issue as well. So, from our briefing, I was under the understanding that we would be building out the entirety of the South Side and Frenchtown CRA District, but then it seemed from the response to a question I asked to ACM Tetter that we're actually only building out Frenchtown and providing trunk lines through South Side. So, I just wanted some clarification to see if we're going to market to the, when this starts to roll out, we're gonna, we're going to market to the entire South Side for residential service? Or, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Campbell, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
John Campbell, Executive Vice President of Metronet in charge of business development. Before I answer your question, Commissioner Matlow, I just wanna say that we are equally excited about Tallahassee. The support that we've got and just the business-friendly atmosphere here is just unbelievable. I look at communities...
I'm sorry, can you say that on the record one more time? Please, everybody that's watching.
No, I mean, truthfully, I mean, I look at communities all over, in a 14-state region, I mean, we're in 80 communities right now, we're evaluating communities everywhere, and we're talking about investing up to $100 million in Tallahassee. And that's a direct result of the support that we've gotten here, the enthusiasm we've gotten here. I've had an opportunity to talk to the commissioners individually, it's just an incredible group of people. Mr. Goode, you have an incredible staff, and we really appreciate it, so. That said, what we're planning to do is build... So that said, what we're planning to do is build what we, you can call them trunk lines, basically they're feeder rings in every area of Tallahassee. That will allow businesses everywhere in the city to, when those rings are completed, to receive service, so that hopefully will facilitate economic development in everywhere. In terms of the residential piece, we are, we are building out certain portions of Frogtown and some other areas that I think have been noted. Our hope and goal is that in other places, in particularly, you pointed out, the South Side, that we can validate that folks want us there. And if folks want us there, we're going to be there, and we're going to have the infrastructure to, to serve those people. We want you there.
Excellent.
And follow-up.
Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
And so I'm assuming as you scope a business in a certain community, you identify neighborhoods of where you're going to build out first. You have some sort of marketing strategy, you're going to either, you know, send them mail or go to door-to-door to try to recruit customers. But from what I'm hearing is that strategy's not necessarily in place for the South Side neighborhoods.
Well, the South, folks on the South Side will be able to go to our website and tell us that they're interested in receiving services. So just because a particular neighborhood may not be included in the initial build-out doesn't mean that we would not consider that neighborhood, and we're very hopeful, in fact, that many of those neighborhoods will, will be excited and want to come. Now, the larger question here, I think, is why did we pick to build where we built, right? And, and so we've been in 80 communities and doing this for 15 years, and we've got a huge data set that we've looked at that determines who will be a potential customer early on and who, who potentially wouldn't want our service. And that's initially what we, as an organization, look at, because we've got to get a return on investment, right? You put fiber in the ground, you've got to be able to recover that investment to, to make sure that we can, you know, continue the development of a particular community. So that's what we've done, but that, the investment does not stop there, and we want to grow at Tallahassee.
So I have a few questions. Which South Side neighborhoods have you kind of done a market analysis on?
The whole thing.
Neighborhood specifically?
We've, we've looked at every single, we've got a proprietary analysis that we do, and so we've looked at every, every single home in the greater Tallahassee area. We don't, I think Commissioner Williams-Cox said it, when we come here, we don't look at South Side, North Side, whatever, we look at all of Tallahassee.
So based on your analysis, and when you did it, you determined that certain neighborhoods that aren't on the South Side were relevant for a build-out immediately, and then we'd wait and see on other neighborhoods? Because I think there are neighborhoods that have high take rates from Comcast and some of the other providers that would also be interested in your service. All I'm looking for is a commitment that we don't wait and see on the South Side, but we go ahead and do at least a full build of those neighborhoods, and only because we welcome you to Tallahassee, you know, we, I want you here, we want you here. But we also want to make sure all of our neighborhoods are taken care of, and 9,000 poles, that's, that's, that's a lot of money if you have to go out and build them yourself. There's significant value that I think the city of Tallahassee is leveraging, and I just want to make sure for that value, because once we give up those spaces, those spaces are gone. Other companies have approached us about coming to Tallahassee, so I think we're sort of a hot market for a fiber build-out, and I want to make sure if we're going to give away something, there's no way to bring fiber without encompassing North Side and South Side neighborhoods to really make the numbers work. So if we only end up building on the North Side, I think it would be a huge competitive disadvantage for anybody ever to build out residential fiber in South Side neighborhoods. So I guess what I'm asking for is a commitment, or at least, you know, going out and surveying those neighborhoods first before we allow a pole attachment, and then, once we, once, if you can show us that, you know, we, we reached out to those neighborhoods and, you know, they don't want our service, but it seems like we're starting from a point of we're going to run a trunk line, but not necessarily. If I live in Calhoun, if I live in JK there, if I live in Tuskegee, I won't be able to call you up and get service. I could call you up and say I'm interested, but then I'd be put onto a list, and that gives me a lot of concern. I welcome you to Tallahassee, I want to support giving away access to public infrastructure unless we've really got a commitment, because as, as this industry grows, it's decision by decision where the investment in infrastructure becomes uneven. And I think we risk, without a commitment, that we're going to do it everywhere, furthering that divide and unevenness in the digital divide.
Commissioner Matlow, I'm going to ask the City Manager to jump in as well for comment.
I think it's important to clarify, John, you can help me, the Commissioner's asking you about South Side neighborhoods, and I realize you don't know our neighborhoods by name.
Thank you.
By the way, it's Frenchtown, in South City, and Bond. And you will recall the conversation that you had with Wayne Tetter when he called, I think he may have called one of your associates and said, these are three very important neighborhoods to us. And so as we're considering this decision, what are your plans to construct your fiber network to these particular neighborhoods, which happen to be in our CRA District? So you'll know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and I believe, just to reiterate, we're, we're building them.
And you're, and you're going to build them. So to draw a distinction between the trunk line and the build-out, I think it's important to make sure it's expressed to this body and to the public that those are your day-one construction efforts, that you're going to build fiber directly to those three neighborhoods. Your development plan in those three differs, I'll leave that to you, I'm sure you're the expert at that, but that you have a presence immediately at the front end of your plan as you expand your service to Tallahassee. And I don't want that to be lost in the conversation, and you correct me if I'm saying something wrong.
No, you're correct.
Okay. So that, so Mayor Commissioners, that was, we knew that was important. We expressed that, and I will tell you, MetroNet, to their credit, went and looked, they looked at their maps, they looked at their plans, and they came back and said, yeah, we can do that. And I, I just wanted to make a point to have Mr. Campbell share that with you tonight.
Yeah, you're correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Matlow still has the floor, and, okay, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Okay, three very important communities you need to know. If ever asked this question again, South Side, South City, Frenchtown, and Bond, because according to what we have here, that's what, that's what we've been told, and that's what we're expecting. So I know you don't know the neighborhoods yet, but you're going to learn them.
Yes, ma'am.
So Primo 101, South City, Frenchtown, and Bond.
Got a motion on the table for option number one, which is the approved recommended changes to the city's joint use agreement made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Matlow.
So, so I think that shrinks the boundaries. So just for clarification, we're committing to building out in Bond, South Side, and Frenchtown for residential access?
The three neighborhoods that were mentioned in the...
CRA District that you've been studying.
Yes, those are, yeah, we would build day one in those three areas.
Okay, for...
That's part of our initial build.
Okay, for the full build-out for residential services and...
Yeah, for those areas that were, you know, I'm, again, I'm learning the neighborhoods, right? So, but there were three specific neighborhoods that we mentioned that the city came back and asked us for clarification on. Those three particular neighborhoods would have fiber services available day one, or whenever the network got completed. You know, obviously, it'll take two years to get it done, but...
Okay, and City Manager, you can confirm that that's South Side, Bond, and Frenchtown with, from your conversation?
It's South City, Bond, and Frenchtown. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
South City and South Side are different.
That's true.
Commissioner Bryant.
Yes, one final thing, hopefully. Hopefully, in your marketing plan for those three areas, that you will connect, the company will connect itself to the community in such a way that value add is demonstrated. Because you may call, and somebody say, well, no, I don't really want that. I would prefer just to have food on my table. Somebody has to be very proactive in connecting with the community, whether it's the Neighborhood Association or someone, such that as a part of the rollout plan, that we have a better chance of engaging persons in the community with the services you provide.
Ma'am, I appreciate that, and we're going to have a, a direct sales force that will be, you know, canvassing these neighborhoods. The other thing I want to mention here is, if you're making a $100 million investment in the community, you want to make that for the long term. We want to partner with Tallahassee.
Absolutely.
We want to learn the community, and we're, we're dedicated to that. And, you know, hopefully, along the way, we'll, we'll be able to find other opportunities to work together.
Absolutely. All right. Yeah. Mr. Campbell, once again, Mayor of City of Tallahassee. I want to tell you how excited that this body is and that the city is. MetroNet coming to Tallahassee with anywhere between a 75 and $100 million investment in our community. With that, we have a motion on the table to move staff recommendation made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Welcome to Tallahassee.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
We are on item number 1303.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item involves the acceptance of state housing initiative partnership dollars, otherwise known as SHIP, as part of the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program grant. The city has been awarded $429,000 in these funds as part of this recovery allocation. With your approval and acceptance, the funding will add $150,000 to our major housing rehabilitation program, $100,000 for the storm damage mitigation program, and $72,000 to the accessibility rehabilitation program, and finally, $64,000 for housing down payment assistance. Michael Parker, our Director of Housing and Human Services, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Parker? Any comment? Dr. Bryant.
Move staff recommendation.
Commissioner Bryant has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 13.04. I cannot believe the birthday boy had to wait until 8:12 at night, the last item on the agenda, but Dennis, if we let you go home early, then we'd have to let Curtis go home early, because he just had a birthday as well. We need both of you, so. Mr. Auditor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is item number 1304, and it relates to a direction that you were giving me on the September 11th Commission meeting, to bring back a proposed scope and objectives for an audit of the matters relating to Scott Maddox. Item contains that proposed scope, it addresses, including the statement of facts and the items that relate to the city, not the items that were outside the city government business. The proposed scope includes addressing the actions of city employees, and whether those actions were in accordance with city policy, state laws, rules, whether it used sound judgment, and whether, excuse me, it's getting a little late, and whether it was within their given authority. An additional part of the scope of the audit that I've added is to look at the laws and rules relating public commit corruption, and the city's compliance with those type laws, such as public record laws, sunshine laws, and if, make recommendations if there's any other measures the city can or should take to help prevent any issues with public corruption in the future.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on the saddle?
We do not.
Excellent. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? All right, we'll turn it over to Commission Discussion. Commissioner Matlow.
Great work. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Glad to celebrate it here with you. My, my only thing is, we originally, I think, lined this up to be scheduled on November 19th to line up with the J.D. Burnett trial and the sentencing of former Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, sir.
It may be prudent of us to postpone starting the audit till January, February, when that trial happens, so we can have the full information from, from those cases. So I would make a motion that we approve the scope and delay till, till the, the February...
Yes, sir. Option one includes a provision for delay at the Commissioner's direction. My direct, my recommendation there would be to delay the beginning of this audit until the conclusion of the sentencing of Commissioner Scott Maddox.
Okay.
In case any additional information does come to our attention, it could be included.
I move we do that.
Commissioner Matlow has moved staff recommendation for option number one, option number two, as amended, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Williams-Cox, comment?
No, I was second in the motion.
All right, you go third. How about that? All right. No further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. City Manager.
Great work, Dennis.
Do we have...
Happy birthday.
Yeah, great work and happy birthday. Thank you, Dennis. Do we have any other items under Section 13?
No, sir. That concludes your policy formation.
We have concluded the public hearing. We are now on unagended business speakers. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak on an unagended item, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we do have two speakers at this time, one Philip Hiss and the other Melissa Villar. And as with our earlier speakers, if they want to come to the microphone, first, Mr. Hiss. Each speaker will have three minutes. If they'll give a name and address, they can...
Mr. Hiss, thank you so much for staying to the very end. We certainly appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please, sir, and you have three minutes.
Philip Hiss. It's 718 Gwen Street. I just wanted to, this is actually, I didn't find out about the meeting until, I mean, the agenda item that was on the meeting about cannabis, but I just wanted to speak briefly about that, and we were spending a lot of time talking about the police and the, a lot of people are being discouraged with the way the police are, and I think that one of the things that would help with the, the relationships with the police, because there's, you know, there's, just like in any profession, there's lots of good people on the force. And I think that what the Kansas City Sheriff said was very, they've been talking about the same thing, decriminalizing cannabis in Kansas City, and up to 100 grams there. But he said, in a, in a speech, and he tweeted it, he said that he thinks that, he says, why is the municipal government in the marijuana ordinance enforcement business at all? That is something that is a possibility to think about. We do not have to have a marijuana ordinance in our city. That's basically what I wanted to bring up. And I think that it wouldn't be in conflict with the state law, it would just be, we're out of the business. And make no mistake, it is big business. The, you know, the, I won't go into that, because I might diverge into things that are, I want to keep it upbeat. But anyway, that is a point that I just wanted to make, something to think about. I can go into greater detail. I've got much more detail on this, but I just wanted to put the, the idea out.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
The next speaker is Melissa Villar.
Thank you so much for staying. We really appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. I'll need to go back and, and review the sheriffs and the state attorney, their, their presentations or their discussion. But on...
You name an address for the record, please.
Sure. Melissa Villar and 169 Sinclair Road, and also candidate for Leon County Commission at Large, Group One. And you do not need to be an invited member, you just have to be a concerned citizen to be part of my political organization, for the record. On top of what Philip Hiss was saying, the, the fact of, the, the reason he brought up about code of enforcement, because, you know, we, we are the ones behind making sure that we have, we are, we are not subjecting citizens to needless arrest. The analysis that you have been given, that, that you did adopt, or, you know, the ordinance, it's 540 encounters, the Tallahassee Police Department had 540 encounters with marijuana misdemeanor possession, 365 were not sanctioned. They were, they just took the, the marijuana from the person and sent them on their way. So Tallahassee Police Department is already in the business of not enforcing, of not having a code enforcement. So on that, that's the reason we're bringing this, this up, because already, you know, the, the state attorney, you know, we don't have the evidentiary testing in place, there are not DEA testing labs that, it would hold up in a court of law at this time to distinguish between hemp and marijuana-derived products. And it's very important, because with the current program, you are only allowed if, if you've never had a criminal record, or if you, if you've never been subjected to an arrest, that you are not able to receive a civil citation if you've had a previous arrest of any type. So the ordinance that's in your packet is a simple $100 fine with no, or eight hours of community service, which it does need to have the same condition as the current civil citation program administered by the state attorney, which is the 90-day condition to have, to pay that fine. condition to have, to pay that fine or to do the community service. And I, you know, earning, at the Askew School of Public Administration and Policy, earning my masters, I studied heavily, you know, my specialty is marijuana reform. And, you know, the reason I'm opposed to substance abuse and mental health evaluations, or any type of urine analysis testing, is because while I was conducting interviews, Tom Ollk from Disc Village told me that they conduct urine analysis testing for their bottom line. So I do not believe that any public policy should be built on the backs of, of our citizens for their economic stability. So that's why I have been opposed. And not only that, but because we have, I have known many individuals who have switched to spice--
Excuse me, you're at three minutes.
Yes, some other type of dangerous synthetic substance. And so this is obviously before hemp flower is readily available. But the fact is, is that people will turn to illicit substances, toxic substances, if they are forced to do urine analysis testing. And that's very important to understand.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment tonight.
You're welcome.
Certainly appreciate it. Thanks for staying till the end. Do we have anybody else here for public comment on unagended items? All right, we will wrap this meeting up with the sharing of ideas. We'll start with Dr. Bryant. Commissioner?
One comment. And I think almost at every meeting, we can find somewhere in the city to congratulate or acknowledge who we are. And I think the latest is that we have been recognized as the top retirement destination in the Where to Retire magazine. So we're from the baby all the way up to retirement. So congratulations to our city.
That's great. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I just want to recognize that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage men and women, because men do suffer from breast cancer. I know some folks, some men. But I encourage you to, to get your exams, your mammograms, and because breast cancer is the cancer that with early detection, the survival rate is great. So we are, we are winning the war, and we want to continue it. And I want to ask a question. Our good friend, Scott Carswell, asked me to ask this question regarding the property near the moon that has, I guess, is looking like it's gonna be some type of residential activity there. And that's, you know, knowing what happens at, you know, the moon, and entertainment, and the lateness of the layout and all of that, and how people congregate there, I'm wondering if the folks who are planning to do something there are aware of what they may be about to experience at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, the folks living there. So I agree to just kind of mention that, because I know he's spoken with several of us, and I don't know what we can do. But the project has received funding from someone other than us, and from the, you know, the housing finance. And I just wanted to mention that to see if there's, do we have, is there anything, any recourse?
Are you familiar with this, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, I am.
Yeah. I share the same, if I can jump in on your--
Please do.
--comeback. I share the same concerns, and very rarely do I pipe up on these type things, because it's a, it's a DRC. It's not a PUD. So it will not come before this board for any action. And I believe, actually, the DRC took place even on Monday. But the fact of the matter is, you have a 35-year-old establishment. And, and, look, it's a concert venue. You have proposed housing going in next door, what, 150, 200 feet away from the doors of the moon. And I just think that this is not a good idea. I mean, I understand on paper, it might be zoned appropriate. It might be illegal. I just think it's a bad idea. Now, if it was a private developer coming in, using their money, their idea, they met, met the letter and the spirit of the law, more power to them. Because it's the Florida Housing Finance Corporation that's involved, it is not just a straight-up private development. And I think, whatever we can legally and ethically, should look in on this situation, because I just see a problem waiting to happen with residential development on Lafayette, directly next to the musical moon.
Because we already have a situation with residents in and another establishment with the noise as it is. And we've had that with Cascades Park and the neighborhood around Cascades. This is gonna be 10 times worse, because it's gonna be right next door.
Well, when you talk about a bar or a restaurant that has the, I don't know, I'm just talking, the capacity of 200, that's different at 2:00 in the morning than a concert venue that has a fire code capacity of 1,900 people dumping out four days a week, 150 feet outside the door of residential housing. I'm just saying, I think it is a recipe for issues. So the question is, is there anything that can be done, Mr. Manager, or are we just--
Let me--
--on the record saying, we acknowledge this is gonna be interesting.
Mr. Mayor, I am familiar with it. It is, in fact, an affordable housing development, which, which presents a conundrum as a priority of, of the city commission. I think the noise probably needs to be addressed early on. We're in receipt of the site plan. I think it looks like a very good development. In fact, I think it probably would improve overall that area from a, from an aesthetics point of view. I'd certainly appreciate the idea that it will be in competition with an entertainment venue that we know we already have that kind of conflict in other areas of our community. Let me recommend this. We are in contact with them through our growth management process. I believe they have all of the approvals they need as far as the DRC. They've been approved for the income, the housing tax credits, which is good. The zoning is appropriate, so those are not issues. And so now they're in the permitting process that would engage with our growth management. I think it would be appropriate for us to reach out to them in an official capacity, make sure that they understand the scenario, and, and go, and we can give you an update from there. I'm not sure you have any position to intervene in terms of the development, though.
Right.
Is it single family or is it multifamily?
Multifamily.
Yeah, and it's, from what I understand, it's 55 and older.
I, I--
55 and older. That's not the case?
No, no, Wayne says, Wayne says, no.
Okay. I had spoken with Scott as well, and I told him I didn't think we would be in a position to intervene as well. But I think it would be appropriate for us, because part of what he described to me is, is some of the disruption is our own TPD officers, and their lights flashing and--
Trying to keep the crowd moving.
Yeah. And so I told him that it might be that maybe we could work with the design professionals and see what they're doing in terms of, you know, noise abatement, maybe our law enforcement professionals working with the owners of the property to see what we could do from that perspective. But I don't know what else we could do. Is the developer-- Is the developer local or out of town? Miami is what Scott told me.
Out of town?
Yeah. My concern is, we're gonna have a developer that's gonna come in. They're gonna use affordable housing income. They're gonna build, and they're gonna get out. And they're gonna leave us with an issue. And you're putting multifamily 200 feet away from the musical moon. It's got a 35-year footprint. It is not a bar.
The musical moon.
Yeah, the musical moon. Oh, yeah, I'm dating myself. But, I mean, it's not a bar. It is a concert venue that is designed to hold, I mean, it'd be a great idea to build another restaurant or bar, or a couple of bars right next to it, that you want to develop the Lafayette Street parcel or retail or something. I'm just going on the record saying, developer from out of town's gonna come in, build it, leave. We're gonna have a problem. If anything, we should enforce the, the best buffer we possibly can between--
But is it beyond that?
--and the musical moon.
Is it beyond that, though? Because you said it's already received the approvals that it needs.
Were there in permitting, is that?
There are. We've, we've received the site plan. I'm gonna ask Wayne to come help me with this. He, he's a little closer to that.
I think at this point, I mean, they have the proper zoning. I think the best that we can probably do is to besiege them based on their goodwill and wanting to be good neighbors. But, I mean, certainly we should reach out in that respect.
We were just trying to uncover some of the details from staff, who's not here tonight. But the DRC actually conditionally approved it Monday, so then they'll have to revise their plans to get final DRC approval. Then they'll go straight into permitting from that point.
What kind of revisions do they have to provide?
That's what we're trying to get, the details. I can't tell you, but I can follow up tomorrow morning with all--
Maybe like a buffer?
Wayne, Wayne, talk to us a little bit about, so we're in receipt of the site plan--
Correct.
--which does have vegetation and the setbacks and things of that nature. What, what influence can we have in that situation?
So at this point, after the DRC has reviewed, and I'm sure that was part of the discussion, because I actually asked staff to have that discussion as part of the DRC. Unfortunately, I did not follow back up to understand how that discussion ended, if there were any conditions that were as a result of that conversation, or any concessions from the developer, if you will. We made it very clear to the developer of the concerns that have been raised. So this is something that we tried to address through the matters that we had. So the bottom line is, if they meet their buffer requirements, if they meet their setback requirements, that is the code. If they are starting to ask for deviations from those, then we have a lot of ability to manipulate the development plan a little bit to accomplish some of the objectives that you are concerned about. But I don't have those details as of yet.
Wayne, what's the, what's the zoned?
Urban pedestrian, right. Urban pedestrian, one or two. It's a very intense zoning.
All right. Well, just keep us posted. Commissioner Williams-Cox, anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Matlow.
Well, I called 8:45, so I gotta talk for a few minutes--
No, you don't.
--to get her out. I got hit my bet. I guess it springs to the end of marathon session of meetings this week, so everybody enjoy their weekend. Hopefully, it's an exciting one.
So, just two things. Next week, and it's all the same, you know, next week is City Government Week in the state of Florida. So you have municipal governments from Pensacola literally to Key West, they'll be doing different activities. Pleased to announce that City Tallahassee will be partnering with the Florida League of Cities, branding-wise. Monday, as you know, is Youth and Municipal Government Day. Really excited. We have high school students from all the public, private high schools across state, I mean, across Tallahassee that'll be participating, learning about municipal government in the morning. They will take over these chambers. They will sit in our seats. They will play our roles. They are having their own elections. They are drafting their own ordinances, and they will create their own city government. Please stop by and check it out. It should be exciting.
Tell them to stay away from marijuana, though. Don't do that ordinance.
There you go. And then on Wednesday, we are having a, a open house at City Hall from 4:00 to 6:00. Pretty low-key, but just throwing the doors open and inviting people to come by and enjoy their city hall. So if you're around, please stop by as well. All right? Anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.